All right, good afternoon. Welcome. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to, it's great to have a full chamber. This is wonderful. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call and order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of October 28th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Camay.
Here.
Campos.
Present.
Tordeos.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For today's invocation, Vice Mayor Foley will be recognizing the District Nine Stars, a longtime tradition of hers. Vice Mayor is coming up to the podium. And I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, did you want me to join you or not? Yeah, okay, I'm coming down, too.
This is a little bit of a departure of an invocation, but I do this every year, and I'm honored to do so. When Vice Mayor Judy Chirko from District Nine was Vice Mayor two council members before me, she created the D Nine Stars, which is a way to celebrate neighbors making positive difference in our community. Now, in my seventh year, I'm actually carrying that torch and tradition forward, and my team are always inspired by the nominations, the stories of kindness, generosity, and joy that emerge. For today's invocation, I'm proud to introduce to you two of the three D Nine Stars. Larry Albright, nominated by Tyler Cole, Larry Albright has served as pastor at Lincoln Glen Church for 48 years, yet his generosity and service extends far beyond his church duties. He has fed the hungry, housed those in need, supported single parents, given free music lessons, and welcomed those without family into his home on the holidays. Through countless acts of service, Larry has exemplified the profound impact one person can have, making each person he meets feel truly loved, valued, and cared for. Today, I present a commendation to Larry for nearly five decades of bringing the community together through his compassion and generosity.
Wow. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You also put this top up there.
Oh, wow, I'll share. I'll share.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
By the way, we had 13 applications, or 13 nominations, so it was really a difficult choice to select the three. All were truly worthy. Rachel Kumar, nominated by Vicky Bose-Mock. Where's, where are the nominees, or nominators? They're up there. Rachel Kumar, from the Valley View Reed neighborhood, stepped up to rebuild and maintain the food pantry for neighbors in need after noticing a void in the community. Stocked by neighbors and emptied within hours, the upgraded pantry Rachel provides in front of her home provides consistent stigma-free access to food and basics necessities for people like the local ice cream vendor who came by daily, a mother whose paycheck wouldn't stretch far enough, and a grandparent caring for her grandchildren. Her compassion shows how small acts of generosity can change lives. Today, I present a commendation to Rachel Kumar for her dedication to improving access for those facing food insecurity in our community. Mayor?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And finally, one of our selected D Nine Stars was unable to attend. That is Bobby Atak, and she was nominated by Dave Noel and Captain Stephen Donahue. Though our third D Nine Star couldn't make it, she should be recognized for her leadership of the Tatruck Community Association and chair of the District Nine Leadership Group. Her dedication has strengthened neighborhood connections, inspired new community groups, and brought people together through community events. We're deeply grateful for Bobby's heart of service and all she's done to foster welcoming, vibrant neighborhoods in District Nine. To that, I present our D Nine Stars, and to the nominators, thank you so much. We're going to do a little photo op right here, and then we'll move on. Thank you so much.
It's a wonderful tradition you've carried on. We're on to our ceremonial items. I'll invite Councilmember Ortiz to join me here at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim Republic of China Day. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Good to see you. Welcome.
Hello. Welcome. Welcome, please. Line up right here. Please, welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Please, you're here. Oh, we got a, we got a long line, Mayor, sorry. All right. It's a full house today. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and, and get started. Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Ortiz, and I'm proud to serve as City Councilmember for the diverse neighborhoods of East San Jose. It's my honor to welcome the Honorable Deputy Director General of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in San Francisco, Mr. John Chu, and the delegation of very prominent Taiwanese community leaders and members. To mention a few, there are Jenny Kuo, Director of Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in SF, Sophia Yashu Chwang, Director of the Cultural Center of TECO in Mel Peters, Vivian Wang, President of the Distinguished Chinese Society International Silicon Valley Chapter, Lemon Hu, Honorable Chairman of Global Monte Jade Science and Technology Association, Mr. David Lin, Chairman of the Sino-American Heritage Foundation. I'm deeply sorry due to time constraints, I can only mention a partial list, but welcome to all. And on this momentous occasion, let us honor this day with the strength and unity of the Taiwanese people, their resilience, democracy, and innovation, and look forward to the future of continued peace, prosperity, and friendship between our two countries. And let us not forget the Taiwanese-Americans and friends of Taiwan's significant contributions to our community through their dedication to education, business, culture, and public service, and enrichment of all of our community, including the diverse fabric of our great city. It is my honor and privilege to invite the Honorable Director General David Chu to say a few words and receive following his speech, the proclamation from the mayor.
I think there's a confusion about my name, which is very difficult to pronounce, and I totally understand that. So, good afternoon, Mayor and the council members. Dear friends, I'm deeply honored and humbly privileged to stand before you today at City Council as the, as the city officially proclaims October 25th as Republic of China Taiwan Day. On behalf of the, of the people of Taiwan, I express our heartfelt gratitude for this meaningful recognition. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that. It's a little bit, you know, I'm so happy about this, so I'm thinking about what to say next. So, I'm, I especially thank the city of San Jose, a community known for its vibrant diversity and its innovative spirit, for its longstanding support of Taiwan and our overseas compatriots. Taiwanese-Americans have long contributed to the cultural, technological, and economic vitality of San Jose and Greater Bay Area. This proclamation reaffirms the deep bonds of our people, united by the shared values of liberty and democracy. We look forward to continue in this, our friendship and cooperation in the years ahead. Thank you once again for this great honor and for your warm hospitality. Thank you.
Now, the mayor will please present the proclamation to Honorable Director General David Wu.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. General, thank you. Congratulations on our proclamation for Republic of China. We're going to take a picture to the side. Signed by every member of the council.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for being here. Let's move this way. Yeah, shift this way. We're getting a bunch of people here.
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you all. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate you being here. Thanks for all of your contributions to the community. Thank you. Good to see you. Yes, thanks for being here.
Sure, sure. Thank you for this celebration.
Absolutely. Well, thank the councilmember. He initiated.
Thank you. I really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Glad we were able to. Thank you all for being here.
Wow, thank you for being here. Yeah, great to see you, San Jose.
Thank you. We're making progress, right? Yeah, thank you very much. It's a pleasure. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Can we do a selfie?
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Take care.
All right. Thank you all very much. Now, I'd like to invite Councilmember Campos to join me at the podium, where we will recognize and proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If we have any guests coming down, please come on down now.
All right. And we are welcoming our community members who are receiving the proclamation today to join me down here. Thank you.
I'm honored to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of San Jose. We proclaim this month to fill silence with understanding and meet isolation with community. Before I served on City Council, I was a preschool teacher and a court-appointed advocate for children in foster care. I've sat beside children, trying to make sense of experiences and feelings they didn't have words for. Domestic violence takes many forms: physical, verbal, emotional, psychological, or financial. Each causes harm, each leaves a mark, and it impacts everyone in a family, including children. Some children try to protect a younger sibling or a parent. Sometimes, it's not what a child sees, but what they feel: the tension in the air or a silence that doesn't feel safe. They learn to listen for cues no child should ever have to notice. Others learn to stay invisible or keep the peace when they should be building pillow forts or trick-or-treating. And these experiences can deprive them of their childhood, their sense of wonder, and their feelings of safety. But those experiences don't have to be a life sentence. With time, we can learn the difference between alertness and peace, between holding your breath and finally exhaling. Domestic violence is about domination, taking away a person's sense of security and self, and our work is to make safety something we build together, starting with your right to be safe now and not something that we wait for. To the advocates, teachers, social workers, caregivers, relatives, and neighbors who listen, who show up, thank you. You help people remember they are not defined by what was done to them, but by the courage it took to survive and by who they are still becoming. Thank you to the advocates. Your work is critical in raising awareness and providing resources. And to every survivor, what you went through was real. You deserve peace and to heal on your own timeline, and we stand with you and recommit to our shared responsibility of making San Jose a safe city for us all. I will share remarks briefly in Spanish and then pass it on to Aperna Dorje, who is an advocate for Nextdoor Solutions and will be receiving the proclamation. So, con esta proclamación resaltamos y creamos conciencia sobre violencia doméstica para llenar el silencio con comprensión y enfrentar el asiliamiento con comunidad. La violencia doméstica toma muchas formas: física, verbal, emocional, psicológica, o financiera. Cada uno causa daño, cada una deja una marca, y afecta a toda la familia, incluyendo a los niños. Estas experiencias pueden privarlos de su infancia, su sentido de asombro, y los hace sentir inseguros. Pero esas experiencias no tienen por qué ser una sentencia de por vida. La seguridad es algo que construimos juntos, comenzando con el derecho a estar seguro ahora. A los defensores, maestros y maestras, trabajadoras y trabajadores sociales, familiares y vecinos que escuchan, gracias. Su trabajo es fundamental para crear conciencia y brindar recursos. Y para todos los sobrevivientes, lo que le pasó fue real. Merecen sanar en su propio tiempo, y estamos con ustedes. Y nos comprometemos nuevamente con nuestra responsabilidad compartida de hacer de San Jose una ciudad seguro para todos nosotros. I am now going to introduce Aperna Dorje from Nextdoor Solutions.
On behalf of Nextdoor Solutions, I would like to thank Councilmember Campos for inviting us here today and highlighting the importance of standing together against domestic violence, an issue that affects not just individuals, but families, children, and entire communities. Domestic violence is more than what happens behind closed doors. It's a pattern of control and fear that ripples through generations. When violence enters a home, it doesn't stop with the adults. Children feel it, too, even when they don't see it. That pain that they carry forward creates a cycle that repeats itself. But here's the hopeful part: prevention works. When we teach young people about respect, empathy, and healthy communication, we give them the tools to build something different and something better. At Nextdoor Solutions, we believe prevention starts with awareness and education. Through our intervention and prevention work, we continue to provide services to survivors and their children. We have done a lot of prevention work in East San Jose and all throughout the county. We support parents in recognizing the signs of trauma and provide resources for families healing through violence. Our advocates work tirelessly every day to ensure that survivors and their children feel heard, feel seen, and supported. So today, as we raise awareness, let's also raise hope and remind each survivor that they're not alone, and remind every young person that they deserve to be safe, respected, and loved. And let's remind ourselves that prevention starts with all of us, in our homes, in our schools, and our communities. Thank you.
On behalf of the council, it's my pleasure to present this commendation for your work during Domestic Violence Month and Year Round. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for your work. Really appreciate it. Why don't we take a big group photo? Here, Walton's face, yeah. Put you guys in the middle here. Does everybody want to gather a little?
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your work and the community. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate it. All right, we're on to our final ceremonial item. I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Foley, Councilmember Camay, and Councilmember Casey to join me at the podium, where we will recognize and proclaim National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm honored to recognize October 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, or NDEEM, with my colleagues, councilmembers Rosemary Camay and George Casey. NDEEM is observed each October to raise awareness about disability employment and to celebrate the contributions of workers with disabilities. This year marks the 80th anniversary with the theme "Celebrating Value and Talent," highlighting the skills, dedication, and achievements that people with disabilities bring to our workplaces. This observation began in 1945 as a week-long observance with Congress, and later expanded to a full month. People with disabilities face environmental and attitudinal barriers such as stereotyping, discrimination, and ableism. Yet, they represent the largest minority group in the U.S. at about 13.5% of the population. This diverse community spans every age, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic background, reminding us that every person, regardless of ability, adds unique perspective, creativity, and value. Especially in today's divided climate, it's important to recognize our shared humanity and ensure each person is respected for their contribution and value for who they are. I want to highlight the city's 17th Annual Disability Awareness Day, which, which will be Thursday, this Thursday, October 30th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at, at, right at City Hall outside of the rotunda. This event continues to grow each year, and in recent years, we've placed a special focus on job and employment resources, reflecting the core mission of NDEEM. The event will feature an expanded job fair and free resume workshop, covering both the basics and providing opportunities for individual resume critiques to help participants take the next steps in their career journeys. While we've made meaningful progress toward inclusion, there's still more to do to ensure workplaces are welcoming, accessible, and empowering for all. With the proclamation, the city of San Jose reaffirms its commitment to equal opportunity and celebrates the value and talent of every individual. Today, I'm joined by, I'm joined by individuals from Options for All, a local organization dedicated to creating and supporting opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities through employment services, paid partnerships, paid internships, work experience, and business inclusion training. This month, we honor Options for All and all organizations, employers, community members, and advocates who work tirelessly to create inclusive workplaces. Please welcome Ronald Shoney, a client of Options for Employment Services and a paid employee at Grocery Outlet, to share a few words before Mayor Mahan presents the proclamation. Ronald?
Hi, everyone. I am Ronald Shoney, and I'm excited to be here today. I am currently employed at Grocery Outlet, thanks to Options for All. Working is important to me because it has helped me grow as a person and as a professional. Through my jobs, I've learned how to communicate well with customers and coworkers, the duties of handling cash, and even knowing the difference between real and counterfeit money. Each experience has shown me responsibility, patience, and how to stay under pressure. I know that these skills will continue to help me in any future career. Work also helps me with independence and confidence. Having a job has allowed me to become more independent with my finances and not rely on my parents as much. It feels special to know that I can take care of myself and make my own decisions. That independence motivates me to keep working hard and continue improving. Most importantly, working gives me a sense of purpose. I am always excited to show up every day and work with an amazing team while also making a positive impact on others. It's not just about earning money, it's about learning, growing, and being part of something bigger than myself. However, the money is pretty awesome, too. I'm truly grateful for the opportunities I've had and for the people who have helped me along the way. Work has given me confidence and routine, and I truly believe that I can do well in anything I set my mind to. Thank you for listening, and have a great day.
Well done. Thanks for sharing your story with us today. Thank you all for being here. There you go. We'll put you in the middle here so we can get a good photo. Yeah. I'll jump on. Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Ronald. Yep.
Can I contribute in the mirror by yourself?
Yeah.
Great job. That was awesome. All right. Thank you all very much. Now, I'd like to invite Councilmember Campos to join me at the podium, where we will recognize and proclaim National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm honored to recognize October 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, or NDEEM, with my colleagues, councilmembers Rosemary Camay and George Casey. NDEEM is observed each October to raise awareness about disability employment and to celebrate the contributions of workers with disabilities. This year marks the 80th anniversary with the theme "Celebrating Value and Talent," highlighting the skills, dedication, and achievements that people with disabilities bring to our workplaces. This observation began in 1945 as a week-long observance with Congress, and later expanded to a full month. People with disabilities face environmental and attitudinal barriers such as stereotyping, discrimination, and ableism. Yet, they represent the largest minority group in the U.S. at about 13.5% of the population. This diverse community spans every age, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic background, reminding us that every person, regardless of ability, adds unique perspective, creativity, and value. Especially in today's divided climate, it's important to recognize our shared humanity and ensure each person is respected for their contribution and value for who they are. I want to highlight the city's 17th Annual Disability Awareness Day, which, which will be Thursday, this Thursday, October 30th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at, at, right at City Hall outside of the rotunda. This event continues to grow each year, and in recent years, we've placed a special focus on job and employment resources, reflecting the core mission of NDEEM. The event will feature an expanded job fair and free resume workshop, covering both the basics and providing opportunities for individual resume critiques to help participants take the next steps in their career journeys. While we've made meaningful progress toward inclusion, there's still more to do to ensure workplaces are welcoming, accessible, and empowering for all. With the proclamation, the city of San Jose reaffirms its commitment to equal opportunity and celebrates the value and talent of every individual. Today, I'm joined by, I'm joined by individuals from Options for All, a local organization dedicated to creating and supporting opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities through employment services, paid partnerships, paid internships, work experience, and business inclusion training. This month, we honor Options for All and all organizations, employers, community members, and advocates who work tirelessly to create inclusive workplaces. Please welcome Ronald Shoney, a client of Options for Employment Services and a paid employee at Grocery Outlet, to share a few words before Mayor Mahan presents the proclamation. Ronald?
Hi, everyone. I am Ronald Shoney, and I'm excited to be here today. I am currently employed at Grocery Outlet, thanks to Options for All. Working is important to me because it has helped me grow as a person and as a professional. Through my jobs, I've learned how to communicate well with customers and coworkers, the duties of handling cash, and even knowing the difference between real and counterfeit money. Each experience has shown me responsibility, patience, and how to stay under pressure. I know that these skills will continue to help me in any future career. Work also helps me with independence and confidence. Having a job has allowed me to become more independent with my finances and not rely on my parents as much. It feels special to know that I can take care of myself and make my own decisions. That independence motivates me to keep working hard and continue improving. Most importantly, working gives me a sense of purpose. I am always excited to show up every day and work with an amazing team while also making a positive impact on others. It's not just about earning money, it's about learning, growing, and being part of something bigger than myself. Through his voice, he shared the stories, the memory, and the moral value of those who want to serve, keeping alive the spirit of freedom and patriotism for younger generation. In addition, Mr. Ngo served as the Secretary General of the Committee for the Vietnam-US Soldier Monument, known as "Thank You, America." Right here in San Jose, a historic landmark that stands as a symbol of gratitude, brotherhood, and shared sacrifice between American soldiers in the Vietnam era and the South Vietnamese soldiers. Mr. Ngo's life was once of quiet strength, deep conviction, and enduring service. His leadership and compassion left a lasting mark on the Vietnamese-American community and the city we all love. On the behalf of the San Jose City Council and our entire community, I extend my deepest condolences to his family, his friends, and all those whose lives he touched. May we remember Mr. Tong Ngo, not only for what he endured, for what he gave, a lifetime of dedication to education, freedom, and community. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that moving tribute. That concludes orders of the day. Is that right, Councilmember? Just wanted to make sure. We don't have anyone else speaking. Okay. That concludes orders of the day, so we are on to... Thank you all. Yes. Did we have a member of the family speaking? That's what I was wondering. Or is anyone?
We would like to invite one of the family member to speak on his behalf.
Okay. And yes, sorry, this is the adjournment, of course. Thank you. All right. So we'll have one member of the family have an opportunity to say a few words, and then we'll conclude the adjournment. Thank you, Councilmember. Maybe one speak. Thank you.
(SPEAKING SPANISH)
It is the moment when people are preoccupied with compliments. This is encouragement, proud. It's been huge for the committee, for our family. Thank you all again.
Yes, thank you, all the council members of San Jose. Thank you all, the members of Tudoc, get your back, support my dad to the last day of his life. On behalf of my family, I'm so grateful to accept the recognition from the city. It means a lot to my dad, I think. He's very happy, he smiles, he rests in peace right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We want to express our deepest condolences to the family for your loss.
Dear Mayor and dear City Councilmember Binh Don, thank you very much for having us today. I am Min Hwang. I am the head of the Descendants of the Tudoc Officers of the Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Incorporated. Today, I would like to represent the descendants, which they could not be here today, and we have all the members here today. Thank you very much for honoring our Mr. Tong Ngo. He has been the chief inspector of our Tudoc Officers of Republic of Vietnam Association since the early 2000 until today. Today, we are very honored to be here, and we don't know what to say. We thank you very much, and he will always be in our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, for those beautiful words in honor of Mr. Ngo. It's our... We express our deepest sympathy to his family, loved ones, all gathered here, and appreciate his many contributions to our community. Thank you all for being here to share his memory with us. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right. And thank you, Councilmember. We will move on now to our closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay. Thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items council would like to pull from the consent calendar? Not aware of any. Okay. If not, do we have a motion? Great. Motion from Councilwoman Campos, second from Cohen. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
We do. Lillian, please make your way down to the podium, please.
Welcome. You're fine. You can just come across here to the podium. Once you begin, you'll have two minutes. It looks like the mic's on.
Yeah. Good afternoon, City Council. I'm here today because you are appointing three distinct members from the community to the senior commission board. Now, I myself have applied for the senior commission in District 3. Yes, I was a day late in getting the application in, but it was rather extensive. And I have been going to the senior commission for the last year and a half before Gina Lopez left, her term expired. We had a subcommittee on housing, and I would like to continue on that subcommittee, and I would like to serve on the commission because housing is very, very important to seniors in our community, and I believe that that is of great importance, and I would like to serve on the commission. I represent District 3, but in reality, you can pick anybody from the community to serve on that commission. I was told that it would not involve an extensive amount of review, and that you could be nominated or picked for that commission if you filled out the vacancy. And of course, our board is... has not met for four months because we haven't had a quorum. So I am here today to appeal, especially to District 3, to review my application and appoint me on the senior commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no additional speakers.
Okay. Thank you. We'll come back to the council. I don't see any hands up. Let's vote.
That motion passes without a vote from Councilmember Duon, but otherwise unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report today.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to item 3.3, and this is the Coordination of Homelessness Activities Audit Report. I see Joe and the team coming down, and we will let them get started as soon as they're ready. Welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Jill Royce, City Auditor. I'm here with Gitanjali Mandrikar, Michelle Malari, and Adrian Perez from our office to present our audit on homelessness coordination, expanding outreach, strengthening grant oversight, and aligning performance goals can improve the city's response. Also in the box is Eric Solivan from the Housing Department. Homelessness continues to be a top concern for San Jose residents. In the city's annual community opinion survey, respondents consistently have ranked addressing homelessness a top priority for making San Jose a better place to live. Preliminary results from a 2025 point-in-time count place San Jose's total homeless population at 6,503. The Housing Department has noted that this is likely an undercount, and in February of this year estimated there were approximately 5,500 unsheltered individuals in San Jose on any given night. The city and its regional partners, such as Santa Clara County, are challenged to fully address the homelessness crisis by limited resources across the housing continuum, from outreach workers to interim housing to affordable housing opportunities. In June 2024, the City Council directed our office to conduct an audit related to the city's efforts around homelessness. Specifically, the direction was to explore San Jose's internal department structure related to homelessness response, assess coordination of activities across city departments, the county, and the city's service providers, and benchmark how other jurisdictions and municipalities are addressing homelessness. While the Housing Department is the primary department responsible for responding to homelessness, many departments are involved directly or indirectly with the city's homelessness response. This includes the Departments of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, Transportation, Public Works, Police, and others. For fiscal year 2526, the city budgeted over $150 million for homelessness programs. The city also maintains agreements with multiple regional partners to coordinate responses to homelessness, including Santa Clara County, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, and others. It should also be noted that Santa Clara County's Office of Support of Housing is responsible for many prevention, temporary housing, and permanent housing solutions countywide, and is the primary administrator of the countywide continuum of care. The city's organizational structure around homelessness mirrors other jurisdictions with one central department or agency overseeing their homelessness response and coordinating with other departments or agencies as appropriate. All of the jurisdictions we spoke with reported following the Housing First model, with most making investments in short-term housing, like in transitional housing and safe parking. And while all jurisdictions had a continuum of care, the organizational varied. Lastly, some jurisdictions have also been putting restrictions on camping in public and private spaces. In the context of the coordination of activities around homelessness response in the city, we had two findings. The first finding is that the city can improve interdepartmental coordination and communication. Because of limited resources, as I noted earlier, the city prioritizes outreach in pre-selected areas through its targeted outreach and engagement program. We also noted that other city staff routinely engage with unhoused residents through various city programs. We found at the time of the audit, housing had limited outreach resources with just roughly 30 contracted and in-house outreach workers to connect San Jose's unsheltered residents with resources. And as a result, unhoused residents outside of those areas have not been prioritized for interim housing or services, even when complying with the city's encampment policies. Also, at the time of the audit, SJ311 data was not used to inform housing's outreach strategy. So we had recommendations to develop protocols to provide timely outreach for areas impacted by...
As a mom of a neurodivergent young adult, I have become highly aware of that as I have grown to learn so much from my own daughter. The audit should have reviewed how accommodations are documented and how denials are justified. The omission of these measures hides inequities rather than exposing them. So, an audit that fails to analyze disability access is incomplete. So I would ask that you would please consult with stakeholders who are directly impacted and center their recommendations, especially in the intersectionality of marginalized communities, such as those that are both unhoused and disabled. I support this memo, and I thank you so much for bringing it forward. I will say, as well as Councilmember Ortiz's memo that came forward, and I would just ask that you would amend it to include recommendations from disability consultant Michelle Mashburn, whose letter Andrew mentioned, and to build an analysis of disability access into any future audit that the city does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Azazel Humquist. I am on... I'm from Serge, and I am asking to this... thanking you for the memo and asking also to make it go much further. Disabled unhoused residents have the potential to function 100% normally, I think, and that I feel that we need to include disability accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. And before the next speaker begins, I'd like to call another batch of people to come down and line up at the podium. Deb St. Julian, Kayla, Bree, Kim, and Sean, and also Kay Hedges. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Au, and I am a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice. I live in District 7. I am here about my concerns about the disabled and how they were treated during the clearing of the Columbus Park area. Also, I did inquire about the 21 RVs, and I did get a response on that, and I do appreciate your follow-up. I would like to see some kind of tracking to these individuals who were cleared and for all people who are accommodated in the temporary housing. What happens to them after a year out? Are they actually in housing? Are they still in temporary housing? Do they have jobs? How is their health?
Welcome, you're fine, you can just come across here to the podium. Once you begin, you'll have two minutes. It looks like the mic's on.
Yeah, good afternoon, City Council. I'm here today because you are appointing three distinct members from the community to the Senior Commission Board. Now, I myself have applied for the Senior Commission in District Three. Yes, I was a day late in getting the application in, but it was rather extensive. And I have been going to the Senior Commission for the last year and a half. Before Gina Lopez left, her term expired, we had a subcommittee on housing. And I would like to continue on that subcommittee, and I would like to serve on the commission because housing is very, very important to seniors in our community. And I believe that that is of great importance, and I would like to serve on the commission. I represent District Three, but in reality, you can pick anybody from the community to serve on that commission. I was told that it would not involve an extensive amount of review, and that you could be nominated or picked for that commission if you filled out the vacancy. And of course, our board is, has not met for four months because we haven't had a quorum. So I am here today to appeal, especially to District Three, to review my application and appoint me on the Senior Commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you, there are no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you, we'll come back to the council. I don't see any hands up. Let's vote.
That motion passes without a vote from Councilmember Duane, but otherwise unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I do not have a report today.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to item 3.3. And this is the Coordination of Homelessness Activities Audit Report. See Joe and the team coming down, and we will let them get started as soon as they're ready. Welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council, I'm Joe Royce, City Auditor. I'm here with Gitanjali Mandrikar, Michelle Malari, and Adrian Perez from our office to present our audit on homelessness coordination, expanding outreach, strengthening grant oversight, and aligning performance goals can improve the city's response. Also in the box is Eric Solivan from the Housing Department. Homelessness continues to be a top concern for San Jose residents. In the city's annual Community Opinion Survey, respondents consistently have ranked addressing homelessness a top priority for making San Jose a better place to live. Preliminary results from a 2025 point in time count place San Jose's total homeless population at 6,503. The Housing Department has noted that this is likely an undercount, and in February of this year estimated there were approximately 5,500 unsheltered individuals in San Jose on any given night. The city and its regional partners such as Santa Clara County are challenged to fully address the homelessness crisis by limited resources across the housing continuum, from outreach workers to interim housing to affordable housing opportunities. In June 2024, the City Council directed our office to conduct an audit related to the city's efforts around homelessness. Specifically, the direction was to explore San Jose's internal department structure related to homelessness response, assess coordination of activities across city departments, the county, and the city's service providers, and benchmark how other jurisdictions and municipalities are addressing homelessness. While the Housing Department is the primary department responsible for responding to homelessness, many departments are involved directly or indirectly with the city's homelessness response. This includes the Departments of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, Transportation, Public Works, Police, and others. For fiscal year 2526, the city budgeted over $150 million for homelessness programs. The city also maintains agreements with multiple regional partners to coordinate responses to homelessness, including Santa Clara County, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, and others. It should also be noted that Santa Clara County's Office of Support of Housing is responsible for many prevention, temporary housing, and permanent housing solutions countywide, and is the primary administrator of the countywide continuum of care. The city's organizational structure around homelessness mirrors other jurisdictions with one central department or agency overseeing their homelessness response and coordinating with other departments or agencies as appropriate. All of the jurisdictions we spoke with reported following the Housing First model, with most making investments in short-term housing like in transitional housing and safe parking. And while all jurisdictions had a continuum of care, the organizational varied. Lastly, some jurisdictions have also been putting restrictions on camping in public and private spaces. In the context of the coordination of activities around homelessness response in the city, we had two findings. The first finding is that the city can improve interdepartmental coordination and communication. Because of limited resources, as I noted earlier, the city prioritizes outreach in pre-selected areas through its targeted outreach and engagement program. We also noted that other city staff routinely engage with unhoused residents through various city programs. We found at the time of the audit, housing had limited outreach resources with just roughly 30 contracted and in-house outreach workers to connect San Jose's unsheltered residents with resources. And as a result, unhoused residents outside of those areas have not been prioritized for interim housing or services, even when complying with the city's encampment policies. Also, at the time of the audit, SJ311 data was not used to inform housing's outreach strategy. So we had recommendations to develop protocols to provide timely outreach for areas impacted by-
As a mom of a neurodivergent young adult, I have become highly aware of that as I have grown to learn so much from my own daughter. The audit should have reviewed how accommodations are documented and how denials are justified. The omission of these measures hides inequities rather than exposing them. So, an audit that fails to analyze disability access is incomplete. So I would ask that you would please consult with stakeholders who are directly impacted and center their recommendations, especially in the intersectionality of marginalized communities such as those that are both unhoused and disabled. I support this memo, and I thank you so much for bringing it forward. I will say as well as Councilmember Ortiz's memo that came forward. And I would just ask that you would amend it to include recommendations from disability consultant Michelle Mashburn, whose letter Andrew mentioned, and to build an analysis of disability access into any future audit that the city does. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, City Council members, my name is Azazel Humquist. I am on, I'm from SURGE, and I am asking to, thanking you for the memo and asking also to make it go much further. Disabled, disabled, unhoused residents have the potential to function 100% normally, I think, and that I feel, I feel that we need to include disability accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you, and before the next speaker begins, I'd like to call another batch of people to come down and line up at the podium. Deb St. Julian, Kayla, Bree, Kim, and Sean, and also Kay Hedges. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Debbie Au, and I am a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice. I live in District Seven. I am here about my concerns about the disabled and how they were treated during the clearing of the Columbus Park area. Also, I did inquire about the 21 RVs, and I did get a response on that, and I do appreciate your follow-up. I would like to see some kind of tracking to these individuals who were cleared and for all people who are accommodated in the temporary housing. What happens to them after a year out? Are they actually in housing? Are they still in temporary housing? Do they have jobs? How is their health? You know, this is a lot to track, but we want to make sure that these people are not just cycling through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bree Mendoza, and I am the clinical supervising attorney at the Unhoused Advocacy Clinic at Santa Clara Law. I speak in support of 3.3 on behalf of myself and based on my experience working with unhoused folks and being unhoused myself previously. Thank you to the authors of this item. Addressing these gaps reaffirms that dignity and due process belongs to all. I encourage the council to continue to see this as the beginning of something powerful and not the finish line. The memo shows meaningful progress, and sustaining that means addressing the realities that residents face. I also invite the council to widen the lens on RV community members who are seeking safe parking. Many of them do not identify as unhoused, but as unparked. They have built stable and self-sufficient homes where families gather, neighbors care for one another, and people contribute to the city. They are not seeking to avoid shelter because they have shelter. It is to preserve the stability that they've worked so hard to create. Recognizing that home looks different for different people is the foundation of sound policy. When systems meet people where they are, trust and lasting solutions follow. During the Columbus Park sweep, I saw how policies on paper can collapse in practice. I saw how residents watch the few possessions they still have that give them identity thrown into trash compactors. I know that this is not the city leadership's intent, and I sincerely thank you for your commitment to change. Thank you for centering and collaborating with voices with lived experience, and I support 3.3 with the addition of Michelle Mashburn's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Catherine Hedges, I'm here with SURGE, and I agree with the last two speakers. We not only need to incorporate Michelle Mashburn's disability recommendations, we need to have long-term accountability instead of just counting up how many people we got, you know, under a roof, or whatever we're calling it this week. As Peter Hughes mentioned in his memo, we don't seem to have accountability for outreach. They're just trying to make their numbers, they're not actually following up on people. And, you know, this, we're just throwing money at a problem to say we're throwing money at it, and we're not actually having an effect. So we need to spend actual effort tracking results, tracking who's in housing. I agree with the previous speaker that, you know, being unparked is different than just being unhoused, and we're not making allowances for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and before the next speaker begins, I'll just reiterate the remaining four names. Deb, Kim, Sean, and Kayla. Thank you, go ahead.
I'm Deb St. Julian. I'm a member of SURGE Santa Clara County and a D2 resident, and I'm also a person of faith. And I'm speaking in support of the Ortiz memo and the Mahan-Foley-Camey-Campus-Tordio memo, with what everyone else said, some additions. We're thankful that you're looking at this accountability, and we do want to know what happens when people supposedly get housed and what the outcomes are. I like data, and I like data, but I know that the data you choose to look at decides where you're going to focus your efforts and outcome. So, we need data about disability access, and we need data about outcomes. So, I support that. And I also want to just say, it's nice in this day and age that we can be in a chamber where we probably don't all agree, but we can speak. I feel that's great. So, yay, San Jose.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, as well as Mayor. My name's Kayla, I'm from District Five, and I am part of SURGE Santa Clara County, as well as I am a caregiver of individuals with disabilities. I support the Mahan-Foley-At-All memo and the Ortiz memo for item 3.3, but with the request for it to be amended to include recommendations from disability justice advocates. I think it's critical to hear from the needs of disabled and unhoused stakeholders. I strongly encourage the memo to be amended to build analysis of disability access into future audits. Further, the audit should have been reviewed on how accommodations are documented and how denials are justified. I believe the city cannot coordinate a fair response to homelessness while disregarding the very population most likely to be harmed by its actions. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Kim Gupta. I live in District Six, have for 34 years. I'm a member of SURGE Santa Clara County and a voluntary responder with the Rapid Response Network, both for the last eight years plus. I am here to speak in conditional support of the Mahan-Foley-Camey-Campus-Tordios memo, plus now the Ortiz memo. A couple of points. I feel like an audit that fails to analyze disability access is incomplete, and the city cannot coordinate a lawful or equitable response to homelessness while disregarding the very population most likely to be harmed by its enforcement actions. And I would sum up by saying, I ask that it be amended to include recommendations from disability justice advocates, as my colleague said, and going forward, informed by and center the needs of disabled and unhoused residents, including immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
I am disabled. I've been disabled most of my life, and it's important to me when I go out there to work on reasonable accommodation requests because these are people from my world. I was out there, I submitted reasonable accommodation requests along the trail. I did them for, so Autumn Parkway, then I did them for the trail, then I did them for End of the World, and I started doing them at Columbus. And almost every single one was either rejected, or there was a whole batch of them that they said, "We didn't even read them, too late, sorry." They didn't even look at them. So, there's a whole batch of them that we did and that other people did from, that we did as reasonable accommodation requests because it was so important to do them. And we know that there's a different interaction between advocates and between the city. So, it was extremely frustrating to have that done to us, and for the people not even to have their needs, their reasonable accommodation, their access considered by the city, that the city just was like, "Beh, we're not even going to read those." Just completely dismissed. And these reasonable accommodation requests were not included in the audit because they were not done by the city. So, I'd like to see somehow those included and looked at as well. And some of these people, there were people with cancer, heart conditions, people who had, you know, wheelchairs, walkers, things like that. And during the sweep, one man who relied on his walker had his walker swept from him. So, it's just been ridiculous to see this happen. I support all the memos. I totally support my homie-in-arms, Michelle Mashburn's suggestions, and it's just, you should be out there to see when we're doing these reasonable accommodations, what people ask for, and when they're denied. There was one person who got a reasonable accommodation. She was left for three weeks at Roosevelt Park, the only person out there for three weeks in the rain. That's the only-
Thank you, that was our final comment. Back to council.
Thank you. Thank you to our public speakers, appreciate you taking the time to be here. Thank you Councilmember Duane for authoring the memo that initiated this audit last year, and thank you to Joe Royce, our city auditor, and your team, including Gitanjali, Michelle, Adrian, and Donovan for conducting a thorough review of how we coordinate homelessness services. Given our significant investment in homelessness response from outreach to EIH operations, I agree, I think we all agree, it's critically important that we are tracking performance and holding ourselves and our partners accountable for maximizing the impact we have with every dollar we spend. Our Housing Department, as you all know, oversees dozens of contracts with service providers who deliver critical services, and we need to ensure that we are consistently monitoring outcomes, not just outputs, and that we have the right systems in place to know what's working, what isn't, and how we can continue to improve over time. Data-driven management, and of course, that starts with good data collection, reporting, and transparency are essential to building public trust and making sure that we're making real progress with our limited resources. And it's daunting. We have scaled up this system quickly. It is complicated, we're serving a very high-need population, there's a lot of complexity out in the real world, on the ground level where our frontline staff are operating. So, I do want to keep that in perspective, that we will, we have to hold ourselves accountable with building out best-in-class data collection and monitoring analysis and building that feedback loop, that learning cycle we've talked a lot about, and clearly, from this audit, we've got some work ahead of us, some tangible, very concrete things we can be doing. So I do want to appreciate the Housing Department's commitment to implementing the audit recommendations, especially standardizing reporting, improving data systems, and setting clear measurable goals for our providers, something we've been talking about quite a bit recently. Ultimately, I think we, it's incumbent upon us to ensure that every contract we fund is producing real measurable results and that we are continuously improving on what the, based on what the data tells us. I also want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful memos, just a couple of comments on those. Councilmember Campos, thank you for leading our group memo related to reasonable accommodations and the handling of personal belongings. Compared to other cities, we are likely in many ways a model for providing advance notice, but I certainly recognize there's always room for improvement and fully support reviewing existing procedures and training materials and ensuring that reasonable accommodations are being provided wherever appropriate, and that we have really clear guidance for everyone, the public we're serving, our own workforce, our contractors. Also appreciate Councilmember Ortiz's memo and the concerns raised about accountability and the request for outcomes and metrics. I share that desire, which is why over the last two years, I've co-authored a number of memos outlining very specific metrics we should be tracking related to outreach and EIH operations as we've approved contracts, and in addition, we've had some specific direction provided through my budget messages. Eric, could you just give us a quick update on how you're responding to all of the previous direction over the last two years this council has given? I understand you haven't even been here for a full two years, but the outreach, I'm sorry, the direction we've given around outreach and EIH operations and how we do performance management.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. So I'll provide kind of a quick summary and then drill down into three different pieces on how we're implementing the prior council directions. So first, going back to the initial set of criteria, set up for outreach contacts as well as data tracking. So we have begun implementing that work as we have shifted recently from primarily contracted outreach to more in-house outreach. That data that was being collected by our third-party contractor outreach into HMIS system needed to be continuously improved, and so we've begun doing that. And part of the shift to providing more in-house outreach contacts is to improve the data inputs so that when we're analyzing the data, there's a better sense of what the data is informing us. And so that's some of the response to the initial set of direction given regarding outreach workers. Then there was the June 2024 memo, which provided direction to collect more data on the performance of the EIH system, and within that, two or three other components related to outreach tracking. We have begun installing all of those metrics into our contracts. As the contracts have rolled up, as you mentioned, Mayor, we've built a system very fast. We've opened eight sites in the last 10 months, so we've had to do a lot of sort of building the plane while it's moving forward. And so as we've implemented those changes into the contracting system, we're now building the backend systems in order to capture that data more automatically rather than the manual connection that it is today, which is receiving it through email and not through a system. So it makes it very difficult to collect a lot of that system and data. And then thirdly, as we're looking at tracking of outcomes, we're beginning to put together, as we just released a couple of months ago, our first dashboards that are tracking the first phase of how vacancies are tracked throughout the entire system. The next phase of that dashboard is going to be looking at performance, consistent with what Councilmember Ortiz's memo is articulating of each of the service providers and how we're constantly building this out as we're building this entire system, as we also add new beds over the last few years. And so each of these components are moving forward as we look to ensure that we're able to provide a comprehensive data collection with good inputs on the data side, then analysis of that data that is collected, and then publicly publishing that data as we've done with the EIH dashboard. So we're moving this forward, and as we've gone through the referral cleanups and are able to compress some of the more sort of outstanding requests that came from council down to a more focused set that are getting to true outcomes that we want to track, we're able to make progress in this area.
Great, I appreciate all of that, and especially your last point. If we've given too much or too sprawling or conflicting direction over the years, certainly always, you know, encourage our city manager and everyone here to come back to us and help us help you if we've, if we've made it too complicated, but I appreciate the progress. I will just note concretely two examples where I've been seeing notable progress. One is the item coming next week on outreach now incorporates a number of new outcome measures that we had previously directed related to what's happening when an outreach worker is contacting an individual person who's experiencing homelessness. It's still not 100% of what we wanted, and I understand it's still a work in progress, but it is substantially closer to what we've been envisioning. And then I also have been very impressed with the interim housing portfolio utilization dashboard and the ability to drill down in basically near real time and understand which beds are being used and how quickly we're turning them around and an important part of utilization. And I'll just share for members of the public, for colleagues, this is, this work has always been important, but all the more so is we are now transitioning from a process of system expansion, which was the last few years, and starting to transition into system optimization. We've added, we will have added, by the time we're done, over 2,000 beds. We're not going to add 2,000 beds in the next three years, we're going to figure out how to get the most impact out of the 2,000 we just added over the last few years. And so this is a critical moment for us to get these systems in place. And then finally, and then I'll turn to colleagues, I was a little concerned that the departmental response to recommendation eight, related to aligning performance targets, isn't expected to be complete for another year, at least that's how I read it. And I'm just curious what we can do to help staff accelerate that work, or if there are just certain elements of building out the system that inevitably will take that long. But I think we're all eager to see this work move as fast as possible.
Yes, just a response to that briefly. So part of what is incorporated into this timeframe of out to January 30th to 2026 is an acknowledgement that as we're shifting, as I mentioned prior, from manual data collection to more automated data collection, that takes some time to do that. And two, as we're reorienting the structure within the department to address what other different roles we need to have, our FTEs in place to gather this connection, do focus more on that analysis, build that analysis into our overall program metrics and performance, that's also a management shift. And that management shift is going to, just going to take some time as well. So there's two parts to this execution that we're looking at, and that's why we gave ourselves just a bit more time as we're making that shift, as we had mentioned, from building out a system to which we've got two more sites to complete this year, to shifting to let's manage it, let's make it efficient, and it's a management shift to ensure that our FTEs are now focused on that data collection and analysis. So it's just going to take a little bit more time to implement that.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for that, Eric. All right, I'll turn to colleagues, starting with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank the city auditor's office for their detailed and candid work on this report, and like always, you always do a great job, so I just want to elevate that. I also want to thank Eric, Eric Solivan, and the Housing Department for their thoughtful response and working closely with my staff on my memo. I think this audit underscores something we all recognize- I think this audit underscores something we all recognize in the community, which is our unhoused responses, one of the most complex and critical challenges that is facing our city, as noted by the comments from our mayor. The audit found that while we've made progress in shelter production and coordination, we still face gaps in communication and accountability with our service providers. We're spending roughly $75 million a year on contracts with providers who serve our unhoused residents, as well as our residents throughout our city. That's a tremendous investment, and it's our responsibility to ensure every dollar of that investment is being used effectively and efficiently because it is the people's dollars. And that's why my memo calls for the city manager and the Housing Department to go a step further, to develop a clear, measurable metric that evaluates outcomes such as shelter placements, housing retention, and successful transitions out of homelessness. This builds direct, this builds directly on the audit's recommendations to strengthen oversight and ensure that funding decisions are guided by real, data-driven results. By tying funding to proven results, we can ensure our limited resources go where they make the greatest impact. Our residents deserve to know that every contract and every dollar brings us closer to our goals of housing or rehousing more residents and restoring dignity to our unhoused community. And so I look forward to seeing the proposed framework returned to the council by April 2026 so that together we can make San Jose's unhoused response more effective, more equitable, and accountable to the public that we serve. I also want to thank Councilmember Campos, the mayor, the vice mayor, and Councilmembers Camay and Torrios for their memo, and I'd like to both move both my memo and their memo together. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank the City Auditor and his team for identifying opportunities to clarify outreach procedures, strengthen oversight of contracted service providers, and meet the city's performance goals related to reducing homelessness in our community. I also appreciate the city administration's response and all of the work that each city department has done in this council-focused area. I want to thank my colleagues in our Brown Act Group for your collaboration and for working with my team to learn about the city's protocols regarding reasonable accommodations and the retrieval of personal belongings that were collected during abatements. I am truly grateful for the support of city staff, in particular Gabriel Rodriguez in the City Attorney's Office, Eric Sullivan and Cupid Alexander in the Housing Department, and Paul Pereira and Olympia Williams in PRNS, who helped explain the city's approach and provided valuable and timely information to us. Thank you for your patience and for your willingness to work with us. Our joint memo accepts the city auditor's report and directs the administration and the City Attorney's Office to review the protocols for reasonable accommodations and for the treatment of personal belongings. In collaboration with the Office of Racial and Social Equity, the city administration will determine if enhanced training or training for additional city staff or contracted service providers is necessary to ensure that people experiencing homelessness with disabilities are granted the reasonable accommodations that they need. And I would also like to make sure our community knows that the Office of Racial and Social Equity has a Disability Affairs Officer, Sheila Sanchez, who will be working to help inform this future work. The training also may reduce barriers or gaps in communication that make it harder for unhoused people to reclaim their belongings. And I thank you, Councilmember Ortiz, for moving this memo, our memo in addition to your memo. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let me turn to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the City Auditor for the depth and thoughtfulness of the audit. It was a wide-ranging review that shed real light, addressed some previous assumptions, and allayed some fears on how we strengthen coordination across city departments and with our third-party providers. This is challenging work for all involved, and I appreciate the opportunity the city is taking to reflect on ways to improve services for our most vulnerable residents. I want to express support for the memos. I will be supporting this motion on the floor, but I want to specifically talk about Ortiz's memo, especially its alignment with Recommendation 6, which sets measurable goals with holding providers accountable in a fair and constructive way. I deeply value the immense effort it takes to provide these services, and at the same time, having clear, tangible metrics ensures that unhoused residents receive the care they deserve and that service providers know exactly what is expected of them. Now, there's a ton of storytelling that happens in this work, which makes the work around accountability and responsibility even more important, getting to the real truths about what is happening on the ground. I'm hopeful these metrics and the performance framework will help the city better understand what's working and what's not, allowing us to be more strategic with our limited resources and to provide transparent, meaningful data for our residents. Now, as mentioned, I'll support the motion, but I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. So given that we've got prioritized outreach through the targeted outreach and engagement program zones, do, what do we know about the uncovered areas? Do we have like a heat map that is sort of showing us where our gaps are? And maybe ask Eric, maybe that's the right place to go.
Yes, thank you, Councilmembers. So yes, we do have, through various departments, I'm working with my colleagues in DOT and in PRNS, a sense of where the other encampments are. There are always going to be encampment abatements that are going to occur without necessary outreach. We're working through that alignment process. And there's also a continuing work that DOT does to clear out lived-in vehicles that may not necessarily have an attachment to outreach process. We're working through those mechanics as well. The sheer number of unhoused individuals who are also unsheltered or living in vehicles far exceeds our abilities to make contacts with 100% of people. And so we are doing a targeted approach, aligning our work across the operations to ensure we can have the biggest of impact. You saw a lot of that occur with the alignment at Columbus Park. We were able to offer over 200 individuals, bringing indoors, over 70 individuals, were filed for ADA accommodations, and they were reviewed by the accommodations officer in the city. We had an entire process across multiple departments. And so there's a lot of opportunity where we find that as abatements are ongoing, as lived-in vehicles are being cleared through the on-lift program, our points of contact for outreach sometimes have to be more targeted because there are just limited resources. And we want to make sure that that point of outreach and engagement can result in providing a bed within the shelter system and then throughput into more permanent housing.
So let's talk about 311 for a moment. Maybe it would be appropriate for you to talk about where you want to go with this, but, you know, we're all referring community members to make sure to report on 311. How are we triaging these reports coming in sort of across departments, right? Because this touches so many different departments. What are you hoping that we can do to be more effective and efficient in that area on 311?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So now, as we've looked at and what is captured and memorialized in the audit report and then the response to Recommendation, we acknowledge that through the 311 process, we get a lot of tickets being generated of, you know, requests by citizens to address and respond to some of our unsheltered individuals and neighbors throughout the city. The challenge is, a lot of that information that comes through is not necessarily actionable. And so in order to dedicate a resource response to the thousands of ticket requests that come to 311, the information that's collected has to be in a form that is actionable, that can be timely actionable. And in addition to that, a lot of, even when we do respond, unless we're able to align that response to connections within the shelter system, or to a comprehensive set of services, or the Here For You hotline, or other valuable resources beyond just a communication with the individual or individuals who are at that particular location, that is part of why, and as identified sort of in the audit and our response to it, we think about the 311 system as a good way to collect data and to inform, and will look to improve how we're targeting our outreach. But in terms of a direct response to every request that comes into 311, we certainly need to improve upon our communications to better manage expectations with the public. But an expectation that we're going to respond to every ticket, knowing the information received, is not necessarily actionable, and we don't have a valuable response to that, we're trying to manage the resources that we have through a more targeted engagement approach.
So now, I'm not necessarily picking on our homelessness response partners because I have some of the same questions around contracts, contracted outwork that we're doing around DOT, right? Median weed abatement, you know, has been a challenge, right? We're sort of third-partying these out, and management of those third parties is critically important to make sure we're getting value for those contracts in the first place. What are we doing through our oversight, you know, of, let's say, an EIH management program? What is our team doing? Are we doing, you know, site visits, desk visits, interviews with clients at these facilities? Can you talk about that for a moment?
Yes, so we have begun, as part of response to the initial state audit that had similar findings, we began instituting desk audits with some of our partners, as well as clarifying some of the contractual provisions and ensuring that there is equal communication going from both sides, from the Housing Department and to our providers. In addition, we are also looking to expand, and this audit captures and the memorandums that were offered on it, further expand sort of that authority and the charge to ensure that as we're working with our supportive service providers, we're taking a balanced approach of this is a service to which we need to get to an efficiency of response and data collection and quality of data collection. And I emphasize quality because we get a lot of data submitted, but it's not necessarily quality or accurate or timely. And so that's another big issue that we're working through to ensure that we're able to be in a position to say, this contract for this amount resulted in these outcomes that further the entire shelter system. And in our outreach engagement component, as we're shifting from primarily focused outreach, that is, you know, bringing individuals into beds for an ever-growing system, now it's going to be much more targeted, much sort of more focused on how do we getting turnover within that system, and then how responding to community needs more broadly. And how does that, how do we shape that in a way that still remains targeted and best applies limited public resources?
Thank you for that. Hey, I just want to end on a note around, I want to draw to my, draw to my colleagues' attention, the memorandum that you put together dated October 27th, the Columbus Park Activation Operations Summary. I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to take a look at that. It's probably a five-page breakdown of a whole array of activity, talking about the interdepartmental cooperation, talking about some, you know, sort of resulting data from the work that was done at Columbus Park. I think it does call to attention some of the recommendations in the auditor's work that really, you know, kind of helps digest what happened there, and I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to read it. And thank you for the report. I think it's incredibly valuable and informative.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. And I just want to thank just all of my department directors, John Sisrally, John Risto, Matt Lash, Chief Paul Joseph, for all, just all the collaboration it took to get to the work and the clearing Columbus Park. It was truly the interdepartmental work led by Will Cox and our, you know, Thursday lunch meetings to ensure we're able to address problems, resolve them, fix them, and kind of move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate those questions. Let me turn now to Councilmember Duane.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. As author of the original memo that led to this audit, I want to explain why it was necessary. The recent state audit revealed nearly $300 million in homeless spending was unaccounted for in city San Jose, which raised a very serious concern for, about oversight and fiscal management. Some said, yeah, we spent every dime of it, but there's, there's no process, there's no line item to what, where, when, and how. A resident deserves to know where every single dollar of their tax money is going, especially when the result on the ground remains very limited. The state audit provide only a broad snapshot. The city-specific audit let us dig deep into our program, contract, and internal structure to ensure funds are used properly and in line with legal and policy obligation. The finding confirm what residents have seen for years, right? Unsheltered residents and encampment remains outreach focused on the number of encounter made with our homeless person rather than measurable success, like helping them. Accountability with nonprofit provider was minimal and inefficient and insufficient. The audit is about holding the system accountable and making sure that San Jose doing everything possible to achieve the real results. We need stronger grant oversight, requiring corrective action plan for underperforming providers, align all performance goal with outcome-based metrics, and mandating individualized housing plans that help people move towards permanent housing. I do have a few questions. The audit found that Housing Department approximately 30 outreach worker handling approximately 6,500 unsheltered residents. That's equated to about 216 clients per worker, far exceed what the National Alliance to End Homelessness recommendation ratio, I believe, is one worker per 10 to 14 unsheltered residents. So what is the department doing to close this gap, at least a little bit closer?
So thank you, Councilmember, for the question. You know, in thinking about how do we close the gap, part of it is recognizing that the amount of resources needed to close that gap far exceed what the city can provide. And so the department takes a more targeted approach to look at areas of alignment with other department activities throughout the city to ensure that we are having the most impact in achieving the highest outcomes we can get with the limited dollars that we are investing in this work. And so part of what was also found in the state audit, as you mentioned, was similar findings of how do we ensure we're investing these dollars? You know, we did provide a written response that clarified there was no missing money. All the money was accounted for, it just was scattered throughout different programs. And so we wanted to make sure we're consolidating those programs, and the next advancement of this work, as identified here in the city audit, is how do we now ensure that we're getting the most targeted efforts of those expenditure of funds to get to the most outcomes? And I think that's probably the best approach, and Joe can add some more.
Yeah, so thanks, Eric. So I wanted to address that, and also some previous conversations around kind of outreach. I know Councilmember Mulcahy had a question about kind of where they, where they focused. We write and we recognize in the audit, there are, as you said, limited outreach workers, and in any sort of resource-constrained environment, we're going to have to be able to, we need to prioritize. And the first recommendation we have is really, how do we ensure that folks, there's coordination between PRNS and housing such that outreach can occur when possible before abatements or, or would be with DOT for like any sort of olive activations. Also, using that 311 data, as Eric said, spoke to earlier, how do we use that data, gather that data to inform future prioritization? So I just want to kind of go back to that center, that recommendation. In any, and I'll just say, in any resource-constrained environment, we're going to have to figure out how to prioritize our recommendation. That first recommendation is really in the spirit of, how can we use the information we're gathering and coordinating with PRNS to help prioritize in the future to use those 30-plus individuals most effectively?
Thank you. And how can a county help with this particular lack of resources, or should they in that, for that matter?
So thank you for the question, Councilmember. I think as we look at ways in which we've recently solidified ways, better opportunities to coordinate with the county in our response to the homelessness crisis in the city. to coordinate with the county in our response to the homelessness crisis in the city by better expanding and syncing up our shelter system, having more direct services from the county, that collaboration and leveraging of resources is going to allow for improved targeting of those resources, which will then eventually lead to, you know, better outcomes as well as more production. You know, the more coordination and opportunities we have with the county, as memorialized recently through the mayor's work with the supervisor, Betty Young, part of that is going to advance our overall collaboration, which is going to help produce more resources for more targeted engagement.
Thank you. It's noted that the outreach is heavily concentrated in a designated TOEP, right? But leave a gap for individual outside of that zone, including vehicles and RVs. So, is our reactive outreach team model sufficient, or should we pivot to more of a proactive coverage citywide rather than just the, only the prioritized zones?
So I'll take your question to kind of two parts. So first, we have and are staffing up now the enhanced engagement team, which is going to do more of the reactive, more of the future planning as more abatements pop up, doing that enhanced engagements. We'll be implementing that as we're going through the hiring process now and working with our partners in PRNS to fully comprise that team, and that will be implemented later on this calendar year. Two, to the question of a shift in strategy and policy and approach to outreach, I defer that back to council as to how we want to do it. If we want to staff up, we'll implement accordingly to address a more citywide approach. The approach that the department, the administration, has taken with our current set of resources is to be more targeted, to be more aligned to other existing operations that are occurring where we can. There's still some resource challenges there as well. And then three, to look for better ways in which to track that progress and understand where the data is coming from and how it's being imported and what it says to better inform the future targeting of those efforts.
Thank you. And then on page, page 24, it's complaints from the community is one of the criteria for TOEP site selection. However, during this audit, the, the 3-1, the San Jose 3-1-1 system data was not being used to inform its outreach strategy. How was department to procuring the community complaints data in order to, you know, implement toward the future?
Yes, thank you, council member, for the question. So we are going to be better accessing that data pool. Again, as I mentioned, it has, you know, thousands of tickets in it, that is not necessary information that is actionable, so we have to sort through that. And we're working with ITD to figure out how best to, through our data management team, Jerry Runner, who runs that in the Housing Department, how best to sort through that data to get an understanding of what is relevant information? How do we take that relevant information and form that into our targeting analysis of where engagement needs to be? And then three, how are we acting on that information so that we were able to best inform how we're putting together and strategizing both our enhanced engagement teams, our regular sort of engagement teams that we have that support our work around EIHs? And then thirdly, how we're having that cross-departmental communications with PRNS and DOT regarding abatements of lived-in vehicles and encampments?
Thank you. I just want to take a little bit of time and thank you to council member, or former Councilmember Arjun Batra, who signed on to my original memo, and I will be supporting the motion from Councilmember Ortiz, which I seconded and included my colleagues from Mayor Mahan, Councilmember Foley, Kamai, Kempas, and Torios. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Let me turn now to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Does feel a little bit like deja vu because these conversations are sort of repeating themselves over and over again, but I appreciate certainly the audit. I think it, it helps to put a lot of these things all in one place, to capture on paper many of the concerns that, that the public has and that we have as council offices about what we're doing in the city, and frankly, the, clearly the concerns of those who are presumably being served by the programs that we put in place. And I want to thank my colleagues for their memos, which are important additions to the recommendation. I want to start, Eric, by following up on the SJ3-1-1 conversation you were just having about the way you collect data. Can you just clarify for me a little bit? You were talking about using the data in kind of, in kind of aggregate. I think when I heard you say earlier was, we can't, we can't reply to every, or respond to every 3-1-1 request, but you were being, we're being informed by the collection of requests. So am I to understand that what you're saying is, if there are in one location, a large number of requests coming in, that informs where response should occur?
What we're going to look to do with, you know, the thousand of tickets that come in, is that though they're individually may not be actionable, in the aggregate collected together may point to an issue that we maybe have not seen. It could be an encampment that wasn't, gone unnoticed, could be a group of lived-in vehicles that maybe, again, has not been noticed. And so how we are able to use the sort of power of all the tickets at once that may not individually be actionable, but collectively may tell a particular story that we need to respond to, that's how we're looking to assess the data. We don't have that tool right now to do that, so we're building that tool out so we can utilize the data we're getting from 3-1-1 to inform how we best address and implement targeted outreach.
Okay, and I, you know, you, you mentioned areas that are, might not have been noticed. I will just, you know, I'll just suggest that, you know, I know that those of us in council offices notice them, those of, we, we hear about them from the public. I think that we try to tell people, please submit it through 3-1-1. My hope is that that is becoming useful in the sense that the more requests there are from one location, the more likely a response would be in that location, because I think this is the biggest frustration people have, is they feel that they're, they're submitting requests, they're not getting proper information. I do think maybe, anyway, go ahead and respond to that part.
I just wanted to say, I mean, I think what Eric's trying to say is, we, we have a lot of work to do, especially as we come out of, you know, what the mayor said, kind of capacity and growing over the last three years to optimization, of now really fine-tuning those services and aligning it with what the service delivery or the messages, messages are within 3-1-1. So that is a bulk of work that really needs to happen, so we're setting residents' expectations upfront on what the reporting tool will do, how we intend to use it, and what a resolution is. That's going to be very important for us in the next year. With that said, that data coming in now does inform an awful lot of work in the way that Eric and PRNS may want to distribute outreach workers, or quite frankly, we have, you know, a vast plan within the city and areas that you guys have identified are no encampment returns. So like, the ability to use that tool and, you know, geo-tag, so we're all of a sudden understanding, oh, there's no encampment return area is popping up, like what is happening there and for us to make operational decisions? That is, that is an area where we use that data now, but we need to be much more proficient and regular in how we use it.
I understand from the audit, and it was repeated in the audit in multiple places, that no encampment really only applies to encampments that we see with tent-type of locations and not lived-in vehicles. Is that, that still correct? Okay, so I mean, and we, I think we have a lot of miscommunication with our public about what Olive meant in terms of no return zones, no encampment, what, for example, just as an example, the opening of the Berry SS Safe RV parking site, when we said we're going to prioritize within a certain radius, there's an interpretation in the public that that meant that those areas would be no encampment zones for more RVs in the future, but we're not communicating, I don't think uniformly, from our office, from the city, to residents about what they should reasonably expect the outcome to be.
Yeah, I don't think we would disagree, and I would just say, from the administration's perspective, I think we all, you know, the, the list of departments that Eric mentioned, I think we realize kind of on the vehicle front, whether it's lived-in vehicles, oversized vehicles, and even Olive, which what it was intended for was really for us to learn and figure out how we kind of grow this, has been a success. Aligning it to those expectations and how we're doing all this work is going to be critically important. So as we, you know, September 30th, we were in front of you with the council focus areas talking about, we're going to go back to the drawing board on some of these. Lived-in vehicles, oversized vehicles will be the, the first part of that really in the next few weeks for us, because we don't feel, it's, it is very difficult to have a set of expectations and a set of communications on one front around abatements and another one around lived-in vehicles, and we want some conform, you know, some, some common messaging and expected outcomes around both of those things where we can, with the, with the constraints we have around state law or vehicle code.
I think terminology is important, too. I mean, I've always felt encampments are different from collections of lived-in vehicles. The word encampment means something different, but we now hear the interchangeable use of the word encampment by the public when there's a row of RVs versus an encampment along a creek. And I, and so we need to figure out, what is the right terminology to use? How do we get that, that out there? I, I think from the standpoint of expectation on SJ3-1-1, I, you know, rather than hope that they get a, that people get a response after the fact saying, here's what the, you know, thank you for your report, we're using it in this way, or, you know, we, we're unable to respond to every, it might even be better to have right in the front of that report, right at the top, above it, you know, set the expectations ahead of time. Your report is important for these reasons, but just know, we can't respond to every report that comes in on an individual basis. So that, right up front, people understand what is going to come out of the system, because I would say the number one thing we get from residents is an email that says, here's the, here is the report number for our SJ3-1-1 report. They closed, it was closed and the RV is still there. That's, I mean, I probably, the number one email we receive, at least our office receives, is, is some version, variation of that. We're not setting the proper expectation about how that will be used. And I'm slightly concerned that the response that we make is due to where people are the loudest and where, and, and, you know, and the kinds of complaints that we get. I know, for example, and, you know, without calling out specific locations, we have responded quickly when there's a business that complains because they can't lease out their property, and we don't respond as quickly when there's RVs in a residential neighborhood. I think we have to think through, like, how are we, I just have an example in my case. I know you're looking confused about that, but we certainly, I've seen it occur, but, but I've seen it occur, and I just want to make sure that we're consistent about the message we're sending out, how we're going to respond, and, and we're not, you know, we're not shortchanging some parts of the city over others. I, I just, I repeat this over and over again, as, as somebody who represents a district that has never had a no encampment zone or a targeted large encampment cleanup, where, but we get the scattered effect of the cleanups that happen elsewhere, it becomes very frustrating for the residents, businesses, and for our office. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that perspective and those comments, council member. A lot, a lot of good points there. Okay, we have Councilmember Kamai, and that may conclude our comments. We'll see.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the, the report and thank you for the response. You know, I'm not going to, I agree with much of what my colleagues have said, and, you know, managing expectations is, is sometimes very difficult, but I think that honesty is always the best policy in that if, if we've learned certain things and we're going to change certain things, I think we should say that. You know, honestly, I mean, I think that when the Olive program came forth, you know, we hadn't done that before, and I think that there's a lot that was learned, but there was a sort of a, a part two that was anticipated, and everybody's waiting for the part two, and, you know. And so I think, I think that, you know, exposing it, talking about it, and, and saying, you know, even, even with the, the, the cleanups that have happened and, and, you know, some of the lessons learned, it's not bad to say, you know what, there are things that were done correctly, there are things that were not, and we're going to change them. And I think that having that honest conversation, I think will help us in the long run as we try to do that continuous improvement. I want to say something about time. We all know that it takes, it's a very sort of complex job that you all have, right? And not everyone is patient enough to wait for the complexities to be, things to be done and how and all, but when it takes a year, a year and a half, it's understanding that there's a level of frustration of, why isn't this being done? So I just want to say thank you for specifying in the response, Eric, the, you know, when you think it's going to be done, but I also think that as you approach those deadlines or as you're at the halfway point and you're not there, you got to let us know, because I think that, back to managing expectations and expected outcomes, you know, we'll get to the timeframe when we're saying, well, wait a minute, we thought it was going to be done by, on here, right? And I know life is complex when you have to deal with many of the different circumstances that may arise, but I also think that, you know, being upfront and saying, you know, we thought that we can get this done in six months, however, this is what we've learned and we can't do it for another six months or another year even. I mean, there are things that I've been waiting for, this is my third year here, and I've been waiting for certain things, and it's like, when is it coming? Well, you know, priorities and all that, hey, I get that, but sharing information will help manage my expectation that it's going to happen. So I think that that's also very helpful, and I know that, you know, I have certain feelings about 3-1-1, but I think that we have all had that sort of like painful, painful experience of, of how it's all happening. I know it's going to get worked out, but I also think that, that if it does not find itself moving in the direction that we want, we need a heads up right away, because I think that as we start thinking about priorities in the next budget, which is going to be very difficult, to me, this is a huge pain point for a lot of different departments, right? And if we're going to prioritize, we need to put the money where it is necessary to make it happen. Now, we'll see how that all goes, right? But, but I do want to say that, you know, what we have learned is a lot, and we've come a long way, but I think that we can do better. We can always do better, and I look forward to seeing some of those outcomes.
If I may jump in, Councilmember Kamai, given that a lot of the work is expected by the end of January in 2026, as Eric has noted in the response, we can certainly provide you an update. Normally, we would get those updates in the semi-annual audit recommendations report that the, that the auditor puts out, but given the proximity to the budget process, we can certainly provide, and the fact that some are supposed to be done in short order in a few months from now, we can certainly provide you an update at the beginning of February, if that works Eric for you, just to kind of give you a quick status run-through through an information memo of, it's, it's, it's completed, it's almost completed, or we're going to need to delay it to such and such a month, and kind of give you a rundown, kind of tally of where we're at with these recommendations.
I, I really appreciate that, but, you know, it isn't just your department. I think, you know, a, a red, yellow, green kind of thing, it doesn't need to be like, take a lot of time, but it would, it would help us also know that what we've learned has made, you know, there are changes or whatever it is, and you didn't get there when you thought you were going to get there, which is okay. It's really, really okay, given, you know, sort of like a heads up to us.
Okay, thanks, council member. Thank you again for the audit and the departmental response or the administration's response. Appreciate that. I think that exhausts our questions and comments. Let's vote. Okay. Thank you, Megan. Let's go on to item, let's see, time check, almost 3:30. We will continue on with item 3.4. Staff presentation, do we have public comment on item 3.4?
We do not.
Okay, coming back to the council, do we have a motion? Or perhaps questions and comments? Apologies, Councilmember Duane. Or I'm sorry, Cohen, I'm sorry. I was, I just looked at my screen. Go ahead. Councilmember Cohen and then Duane, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank staff for bringing it forward. As always, we need to continue to make sure we have the fire safety response vehicles that, that are necessary to keep our community safe, and I appreciate this purchase. Obviously, I was part of a, of a group that put out a memo on future presentation of such purchases and some additional investigation. When I saw this memo, I thought, you know, I obviously come from a lens of thinking about the environmental impact of everything we do as a city, and we, at times, have had one of our standard items on our memos, be it climate smart. be it climate smart, uh, all-staff memos had a climate smart, um, part at the bottom that said, here's the impact on the climate of this, but it seems to have been, become optional. It isn't always showing up on our reports. But what I was looking, what I look for in every report on vehicle purchases is some, uh, explanation as to a choice that's been made when we're at, about electrification or non-electrification. I clearly never expect that we will be buying, um, aerial drawn tractor, tractor drawn aerial trucks that are electrif, we're probably not there yet in our technology. But I think it's important that we always have in one of these reports that comes to council, a, an, an acknowledgement that we are continuing to look at options, evaluate options, and then explain why the traditional option is still better than the electrification option. And I think, um, no matter, at this, just from the standpoint of the portion of, on this memo about, um, making sure that we do that analysis, I would have written this memo on, on whatever the next large vehicle purchase was that came to council. This isn't specific to fire vehicles, but, um, we did include some examples, though, of cities around the country that have begun to electrify their fire fleets. I've taken, I've actually been in one of the trucks down in Rancho Cucamonga that was pretty impressive, and spoke to very happy firefighters who use electric fire trucks. So we ought to always be evaluating the latest technology. And it's changing rapidly, so having done an analysis two years ago doesn't mean that it shouldn't be done again. So I just want us to make sure that we're always looking at those options as we move forward on, on these purchases, and that's the, uh, the reason for the recommendation. I also think it's important because we have a city goal of electrifying our fleet, plus a state law that requires us to over time electrify our fleet, to make sure that we, as a council, are informed as to what the shortcomings are, so that when we discuss this at the Transportation Environment Committee and as a council, we're aware of what the city's concerns are about the electrification of our fleet, so we can address those, um, through our budget process and in other ways. So I will move the memo that was co-authored by myself, Mayor, Councilmember Tordeos, and Councilmember Candellis.
Thank you.
Actually, it was Councilmember Foley, Vice Mayor Foley. I got the wrong group here. I'm sorry. I didn't even, Vice Mayor Foley was part of that, probably not Councilmember Tordeos on this one. Sorry.
But we're hoping for his support. All right. Thanks, council member. We'll go to Councilmember Dwan.
Well, I appreciate your intent on, on your memorandum, but, uh, you know, I've always believed that you're very knowledgeable about environment and electrification and so on. I leave that to you. But when it comes to the fire service, I think you should go to the expert, and you should go to our fire department, um, regarding this particular issues. Now, this is very based on the fire department apparatus, and we're not talking about fleet. When you're concluding fleet, let's wait until, you know, another time to do fleet. Now, you know, 27-year in the fire service, I would imagine I know a little bit about the fire rigs and what needs to expected, um, to go on the fire, to, to go on mutual aids. There's many, many stuff that, that most of you don't know about fire rigs. And when you go to Rancho Codova, it was one rig, and then you go to LA, there's one rig. And believe me, pretty soon, those, those rigs, electric rigs, they'll be, you know, the apparatus will be a mothball in, in a sense. And, and you may talk to a few firefighters, but it, you didn't talk to the, the IAFF local 230. It, we're talking about international firefighter. The technology is not there. And it's not feasible option for the fire department at this point. The current electric model do not meet our operational need or range, or even forgot for the, you know, this recent fire right up the Sierra Road. They spent multiple hours, and then they have to spend enormous, what you call on Fire Watch, on the same rig for hours on end. And, and when we're talking about, oh, we're going to run the, the diesel generator, here we go, we're going back to the same thing. And then when we have mutual aid down south, or even up north, or even out of state for that matter, it's, we're not going to run the generator to get us there. And then the, the, what you call, all the mechanic do not have that expertise to, in order to deal with electric rigs. Not only that, they require costly, what you call, charging infrastructure that we don't have the funding, nor do we have the knowledge at this point to put it together. That being said, you know, I, I do support, when, when you talk about in general, I know that the state mandates 70% of our fleet to meet electrification and so on. But you're going to remember, the, there is an exemption that stated very clearly that would discuss, I mean, in depth by our International Firefighter Association, and all the departments surrounding us. And that's why we, they, they made an exemption. And I, I, for now, the diesel apparatus remain the only reliable, practical option that maintain uninterrupted emergency response capability. It is important that we know the jurisdiction listed in the background only purchase one or two apparatus. We, we don't base on one or two. If there's department out there that actually changed the whole rigs, I mean, the whole apparatus program, that would take 25-plus years. And it took us three to five years just to get the rigs that we have now. And so I still have some question. I, I like, I have a question for our Director Matt Lesch and, and, uh, PW, and also the Deputy Chief Dobson to, to come on down. So the first question I have is, is for Director Matt Lesch. Do we have that capability and infrastructure in order to support the electric fire apparatus? And if so, what is the cost? What is the timeline in order to make it happen?
Uh, two things. All the Measure T firehouses are built kind of pre-ready to accommodate that next level of investment in those complexes, so that, what, like Fire Station 8, Fire Station 32, and the future Fire Station 30 that we're also going to build, will all be ready to receive that electric infrastructure. They don't have it there yet because there's no trucks in, that meet that capacity right now in our inventory, but they're built for that purpose to be ready if. And so that's what, so that's the, that's where we're positioning the buildings themselves. And we do not have electric fire trucks at this time.
So we, we're talking about Station 8, Station 32, Station 37. Other than that, the rest of the station is not ready?
We have not put any infrastructure to support electric fire trucks in those buildings.
And can you tell me what was the cost to, to retrofit all those stations?
We have not done that, we've not done that analysis, and one of the things we've proposed is that TNE, when we come back, we can present what we think is the rough scope for that, for the firehouses, plus all of the other fleet.
Thank you. I have a question for Chief Dobson, and, and you see the push for electric apparatus. And part of it is also reducing our roads and, and looking at compact, uh, fire apparatus. Can you give us your thought process, as being a professional? I'm, I believe you've been on for about 20-plus years. What is the, the pros and cons on that?
Yeah, so I think the fire department, so first off, James Dobson, San Jose Fire Department Deputy Fire Chief. Um, I think we're open to the evaluation of these new vehicles and to try and look into, uh, if we can support that. But I, I think you bring up some great points that, you know, with our mutual aid, with our long responses, with just our call volume, uh, there will be challenges, and I think those need to be analyzed. Uh, as far as our roadways, um, when we look at our current fleet, uh, we have our vehicles up to 20 years. You're looking at a vehicle replacement timeline of 25 years. If we start to reduce the size of our roadways tomorrow, today, we will have problems tomorrow, based on the size of our vehicles and how we operate. Um, long-term planning is always something that we can look into, but, um, it, it's not something that's going to happen right away as far as our ability to respond. And I did want to offer an opportunity for, uh, our Deputy Chief Patrick Chung, who actually, uh, manages our fleet, to, to provide some comment.
Thanks, Chief Dobson. Uh, Patrick Chung, Deputy Fire Chief for the Bureau of Support Services. I manage all the fleet facilities and equipment for the fire department. To answer your question, council member, about, uh, the expected costs, I did just happen to research the City of Redmond, which I believe is referenced in the council memorandum or response to the agenda item. Uh, City of Redmond's claiming that they spent $350,000 for charging infrastructure for one fire station. Uh, the approximate cost of the apparatus, $2.1 million for an electric fire engine. Right now, we're quoted at $1.2 million for a typical legacy diesel fire engine. So it's exponentially more expensive, um, for cost. Uh, for the apparatus, Chief Dobson did mention, uh, right now, we are turning over a small portion of our fleet with the type 1 engines and the tractor drawn aerials. But as he eloquently stated, uh, the service life of these apparatus are 20-plus years. Uh, not only is that the frontline service, but as you see in the council, uh, or the agenda item memorandum, we also hold those apparatus in reserve status as well for an additional five to 10 years, uh, just to cover, uh, the reserve backups whenever our frontline apparatus need to go in for service or repair. Uh, so as Chief Dobson stated, it, it's a 25-year-plus turnaround for us to change our entire fleet when it comes to dimensions and turning radius. I will say the agenda item that you're hearing right now is for tractor drawn aerials. Those are the most maneuverable aerial ladder trucks that you can purchase, based on the fact that they have two operators. They have rear steer, and they can basically turn a U-turn on a, on a dime, whereas a legacy straight aerial truck cannot do that. The other thing I'd mention is, uh, some of the limiting factors that we're already working with are the fact that our legacy fire stations, um, are small to begin with. So we are, in fact, taking that into consideration. Deputy Director Walter Lynn would agree and confirm, uh, dimensions, turning radius, approach angles, departure angles, those are all considerations right now that we already take into consideration, uh, when we procure and specify apparatus.
And then I, on, on top of that, even on the normal calls in a busy station, we, we are going over 110,000 calls per year. Will, for example, they're talking about generator and, and running the rigs, will that support our response time going from one call to another, especially, for example, Station 26? They, they're going 26 calls or more. Will that generator support that electric apparatus to meet the demand on top of the calls and, and many other activity that, uh, from inspection to public say, you know, education and so on?
And then after this response, I'm gonna, we'll, we'll come back around, just because we're over our 10 minutes here, and I do, we do have a number of other hands up, but go ahead and answer that question.
Great, great question, council member. Uh, currently, as it stands, um, we, we have to be very conscientious about a couple different factors that would impact a electric fire engine's capability to perform emergency response operations in our city. One is absolutely the charging infrastructure. Uh, they need to be located at a station that has three-phase, 480-volt, uh, charging infrastructure in place already. Uh, the other is, a, a couple of the projects we're working on right now with the city manager's office, and specifically to our focus areas, is closest unit dispatch. So what we could potentially see is a fire engine that's assigned to its first due, runs a call at the edge of the border of its fire station's first due, and then it, it now becomes available as the closest unit for the next first due. And so as that fire engine starts working its way outside of its first due to other stations' coverage areas, we need to be conscientious of the range, uh, the operating capacity, how long it's been out running calls or performing inspections. Uh, at some point, that diesel generator will kick on, and we will start seeing some outputs of carbon, which is what I believe the whole purpose of purchasing an electric, electric vehicle would be to avoid.
Thank you. And we can come back to Councilmember Dwan if, if you have further questions. I just want to clarify, we have a number of hands up. We are coming up on a time-certain item that we would like to hear as close to 4:00 PM as possible. I want to just clarify for everybody following along that, um, the, the, the very practical questions being asked by Councilmember Dwan are exactly what the memo is, is asking for, just to be clear. The memo, the group memo is not asking staff to procure electric fire engines. It's asking for an assessment of feasibility and a report to TNE to help us answer the exact questions that are being asked today. Uh, clearly, it is not feasible today, or it would have been in this procurement. I think what, uh, a number of us would like to understand is the costs, the feasibility, and, uh, recognizing that it likely is a multi-decadal, if that's the right word, multi-decade transition. What does that, what does that look like? What are the costs? It's not something that's going to happen overnight. I think we rec, I think that's the, the entire point of the memo. I think the concern was that the procurement memo was silent on the topic, and I think we just wanted to highlight that it would be helpful to have some of these questions answered in a rigorous way through a, a staff analysis that includes fire, ESD, and other relevant, uh, departments and stakeholders that could come back next year for us to be a little better educated on the topic. So we can continue with the discussion, questions, debate, but I just wanted to level set what the memo is trying to do in the, in the context of this action that we are hopefully about to take. Let me turn to Councilmember Tordeos.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I just wanted to reinforce the point that this is not a mandate, uh, that this is all about exploring feasibility and, uh, trying to get better cost estimates on the electrification build-out. Uh, I think, you know, the previous comments made about the time scale for actually doing turnover of our fleet is why it's important to be proactive in terms of exploring new types of, uh, fleet vehicles, both on the electrification side, but also on the more compact fire apparatus side. Uh, and that's the, the portion of this memo that I really was excited to see, uh, spent some time over the weekend digging into, uh, kind of exploring some of the different recent fleet acquisitions across the country. I think if we look at that 20-to-25-year time scale and our goals for Vision Zero, for narrowing some of our streets, slowing traffic, encouraging denser infill development, uh, that these are exactly the sorts of explorations we're going to have to do in the short term to align with some of our long-term city goals. So I will be gladly supporting the memo on the floor.
Thanks, council member. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, too, will be supporting the memo, uh, the motions on the floor. I'm supportive of, of ensuring that the fire department can procure lifesaving equipment, and want to clarify that nothing in our joint memo is intended to delay this procurement at all. However, this is an opportunity, and it's already been said, I'm just reiterating, to reevaluate our policy to ensure that purchasing of fire equipment is in line with others, other city policies, such as fleet electrification and Vision Zero. As we work towards creating a greener fleet, it's important that we evaluate our entire fleet, including fire trucks and engines. I understand that there are some unique challenges with electric fire trucks, which is why in our memo, we are not mandating an electric transition, but rather asking staff to explore it. I also understand there's some potential for zero emissions alternatives to electrification, such as hydrogen. The second part of our memo asks for staff to explore the potential of procuring more compact vehicles. Much of our Vision Zero work involves narrowing travel lanes and tightening turning radii to improve safety. However, challenges arrive with this due to large fire vehicles not being able to navigate these safer street. We're not saying we don't want you to fight fires. We want you to fight fires and take care of our community. We just want you to take a look and see if there are other vehicles that might be out there and available for us. As we become a more urban city with a greater focus on multimodal transportation and transportation safety, we should also be exploring more compact solutions to fire equipment. So again, I'll be supporting the motion.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Okay. I don't see any further hands. Councilmember Dwan, did you want to wrap up? Go ahead.
Or is a, a friendly amendment, um, that we can bifurcate this, that, you know, the, the recommendation, let me double-check on here. Recommendation on, give me a moment. So we'll, recommendation to follow in accordance with the state two follow in according with the state law as recommendation three proposed just below? It just state law provide an exemption for emergency vehicle, police, fire, and medical. Yet recommendation two seem to tie future procurement with a comprehensive fleet electrification proposal. So, if we take out, I, you know, I read this, my friendly amendment just takes up your recommendation under your memorandum as number one and number three. And it still does everything, but we talked very specifically fire apparatus and the exemption. Will you accept that friendly amendment, just take out, you know, two and four? Just accept one and three?
No, it's not. I prefer to leave it as is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a chance, for the first time in my life, to make all of you happy?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Our green fleet, make a stab at it for once, instead of saying no. So, the green fleet policy that we already has, have, since 2007, requires us to reevaluate every acquisition of every vehicle, to look for the lowest emission vehicle that is both available and suitable for the work, which I think is what we're all trying to achieve. We already have that policy in place. It also includes reducing vehicle size where appropriate. And so that evaluation happens on every procurement of every vehicle across our fleet. And so we welcome a chance, in the spring, when we come to TNE, to talk about this a little bit more. And I think that meets sort of both the spirit of what both everybody is saying here, as opposed to trying to change anything we currently have. We come back in the spring, talk to you about the infrastructure costs, and talk to you about how we continually evaluate every single time.
That's great. Yeah, my sense is, the group memo is, we haven't heard any concerns from the administration. I think it's aligned with previous council direction. The procurement memo here didn't speak to it, so I think it was an opportunity to highlight the issue and actually ask for some analysis to come back to TNE. And as you've just heard, the maker of the motion would like to keep the motion together holistically, which it sounds like doesn't concern the administration and aligns with existing council policy, which is why I was a little surprised we were spending so much time on this one. But we've got a motion, and we don't all have to support it, but we've got it, and I think we're ready to vote unless there's any final, okay, let's vote. Thank you.
This motion passes 10 to 1, with the no being Councilmember Dwan.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you all. Since we're not at 4 o'clock yet, and we did make a couple of items time certain at 4, we're gonna see if we can move through a couple of these quickly before then. We are on to item 3.5, which does not have a staff presentation. Do we have public comment on item 3.5?
We did not. Move approval.
Second.
Great. And I don't see any hands, so I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to item 3.6, Amendments to the Agreements with Standard Insurance Company and Life Insurance Company of North America. My apologies for not reading the title of the last one. There's no staff presentation. Do we have public comment on item 3.6?
We did not.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Not seen any hands, so I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to item 3.6, Amendments to the Agreements with Standard Insurance Company and Life Insurance Company of North America. My apologies for not reading the title of the last one. There's no staff presentation. Do we have public comment on item 3.6?
We did not.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Not seen any hands, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. I think the only other item without a staff presentation that should be relatively quick to get through is going to be item 3.8. So why don't we go to the award of contract for 10-344 Vision Zero East San Jose Safety Improvement Center Road Project? I think we can take up that item, and then we'll turn to our time-certain item. There's no staff presentation. Let me ask first if there's public comment on item 3.8?
No, there is not.
Okay. I believe there was a blue memo that came in late, as we were, came in as we were starting the meeting. Let me find that. And it's from Councilor Dwan, who's hands up, so why don't we start with Councilor Dwan on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. As we move forward with Vision Zero East San Jose Safety Improvement along Center Road, I want to emphasize the importance of a strong, consistent outreach to the residents, businesses, and stakeholders in District 7, who will be affected by this work. This project will bring real safety and mobility benefits, safer crossing, better bike lane, and pedestrian access, and improved traffic flow. But will also bring construction impact, schedule shift, and circulation change that our community must be prepared for. While the memorandum notes several outreach efforts during design, including mailers, community meetings, and multilingual material recent events, Astoria and King remind us that our outreach still needs to be stronger. If we begin work on Center Road, we had an opportunity to do better. Outreach should be proactive, multilingual, and ongoing throughout construction, not just at the beginning. We should be engaging with schools, small businesses, and community organization along the corridor, and using every tool we have to keep people informed. District 7 is a vibrant, diverse community. Our resident deserve communication that reflect that diversity and respect their daily lives. Community trust and partnership are key to making this project a success. My office stand ready to help and share information through our networks, newsletter, and events. I want to thank staff for their hard work, and urge that we keep the focus not only on delivering a high-quality project, but on ensuring that the process is transparent, inclusive, and community-driven from start to finish. With that, I've moved for my memorandum. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands, so let's go ahead and vote on item 3.8. Okay. Thank you. If it pleases the council, I might suggest we take a very brief recess for three or four minutes. We have a time certain item. Just to repeat this for folks who are wondering, we're going to hear items 3.9 and 4.1 concurrently, and then we will discuss them together, but vote separately. We'll take separate motions. But just to give members of the public an opportunity to put in comment cards and weigh in if they'd like, we'll go ahead and take a three-minute recess, and then we'll begin. Thank you all. Colleagues, just want to give a maybe one-minute warning if folks can make their way back to their seats. Thank you. All right, we have quorum, and we have quorum, so we'll start, we'll resume our meeting. We're back from recess. So again, just as a reminder for anyone who's just joined the meeting, we're going to now take up items 3.9 and 4.1. 3.9 is restricting civil immigration enforcement activities on certain city properties and facilities. 4.1 is ordinance prohibiting law enforcement officers from concealing their identities in the City of San Jose. We're going to take those items up concurrently, meaning we will hear public comment once on both items, given the related nature of the issues. Then we will come to the council, discuss them together, but we'll take separate motions and votes on the two items. Megan, how many comment cards do we have?
16 at the moment.
16. Okay. We'll go ahead and, can we go to 90 seconds per minute and a half per speaker? Just to make sure we get to all of our other staff presentations in a timely fashion. All right. And let's go and begin the public comment period again for items 3.9 and 4.1.
I'll start off in groups of four, so I'll call four names. If you could make your way down to the podium and wait at the stairs. You don't have to speak in the order in which you are called, but I'll call the first four. Azazel, Deb St. Julian, Andrew, and Lori. Please make your way down. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Once again, my name is Azazel Holmquist. I am a resident of D6. As you know, many of our neighbors are terrified by escalating brutal immigration enforcement. We should not allow city properties and resources to facilitate even more wide-scale enforcement operations. Doing so would shatter the community's trust in our local government. Urges to adopt a policy proactively before more widespread raids reach our city, so that we are prepared to say no when federal agents try to commandeer city resources to terrorize our community. The use of masks by ICE creates serious public safety risks, as residents cannot identify kidnappers from law enforcement who are sworn to protect them. The potential for abuse is immense, and we've already seen instances where this confusion has been exploited. When officers operate under masks, it erodes public trust in our government, creates an environment of fear, opens opportunities for impersonators to kidnap our neighbors, and leaves our immigrant communities vulnerable to abuse, the abuse of power. Our priority is the safety of our community, and any practice that puts them greater, at greater risk is unacceptable. We should not allow unidentified agents to terrorize our neighbors by hiding behind masks. San Jose identifies as a welcoming city, and we are one of the most diverse cities in the, in the country, California. Thank you very much, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. My name is Andrew Siegler, and I'm a resident of District 3 and a member of SIR, Santa Clara County. Yeah, let's approve these, 3.9 and 4.1. You know, like, our communities are under attack. Our immigrant communities are under attack, and you know, there's a whole host of other groups, marginalized groups, that are going to be under attack in the same way soon. And, you know, this is, it's about accountability. You know, if a group of masked people came up to me- You know, if a group of masked people came up to me and tried to manhandle me, you know, I mean, good luck. But, you know, if they tried, you know, I can't say that I would be like, oh, you're obviously law enforcement officers. You know, so I, you know, and that wouldn't be good for anybody. This is about, like, making sure that, you know, people are safe, people are not, you know, needlessly afraid. And, yeah, just, and also, ICE has no business on city property whatsoever. So, let's do this. Thanks.
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, we have Lori and Deb St. Julian that have already been called, and I'll call the next four people so they can start lining up. Kayla, Kim, Kay Hedges, and Maria Lynch. Thank you. Please go ahead.
My name is Deb St. Julian. I'm a member of SURGE, Santa Clara County, a D2 resident, and a volunteer responder with the Rapid Response Network. I strongly support Agenda 3.9 and 4.1. Watching ICE terrorize my neighbors has changed me. As a rapid responder, I have seen ICE stage, which means you park a group of vans and use them to process shackled and handcuffed neighbors, and you move them from an abduction or kidnapping vehicle to vans which take them to detention. I have seen staging in South San Jose behind Jack-in-the-Box, behind medical offices, behind Chavez Market. We should not allow our city properties and resources to be used to terrorize our neighbors like this. We should do everything we can to stand with our neighbors against this brutish, thuggish activity in our city. We must restrict any activity like this from being done on city property. And of course, I oppose hiding people's faces. I have had agents say to me, it's none of my business who they are or which agency they work for. This is happening now in San Jose. I support these.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Good afternoon again. My name is Kayla. I live in District 5. I'm a member of SURGE of Santa Clara County, and I also am a volunteer responder with the Rapid Response Network. I do support Agenda Items 3.9 and 4.1. For 3.9, the overall large-scale immigration enforcement around us has brought so much fear for our San Jose neighbors, so I believe that we need our city to be place of accountability and trust. The city properties and resources should not be used for these immigration enforcements, so please adopt policies to prevent this. In regards to 4.1, there is a lack of identification. When there is a lack of identification and masking of law enforcement, it brings confusion and the possibility of impersonators for kidnaps or other harm. It creates fear and blocks accountability. Our priority should be the safety of our community. Law enforcement must be transparent and respect constitutional and human rights. We are a beautiful and diverse city. Let's look out for each other and demand law enforcement to be identifiable and unmasked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm a San Jose resident, a member of Councilman Mulcahy's district. I am a member of SURGE, Santa Clara County, and I am a rapid responder. And I'm here to ask that you not allow ICE to use city grounds or facilities as staging grounds or allow ICE to wear masks. San Jose cannot be complicit in terrorizing our friends and neighbors in the community. We are one of the most diverse cities in the country, and the people who live here are proud of that fact. They are proud of the fact that San Jose or Santa Clara County is a sanctuary city. Please support Agenda Items 3.9 and 4.1. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Kim Guptill, D6, SURGE member, rapid responder, and I'm here today in support of Agenda Item Number 3.9 because American citizens need to show up for their undocumented siblings. These people are our siblings. They are being scapegoated, kidnapped, and disappeared, but then you already know that. So, we cannot allow city properties and resources to be used for enforcement operations because immigrants need to trust that we have their backs. You guys say that all the time, and this is a perfect example of where we can show that. Please support Resolution 3.9. As for 4.1, when officers operate under masks, it erodes public trust in our government, creating an environment of fear. It opens opportunities for impersonators to kidnap our neighbors and leaves our immigrant communities vulnerable to abuse of power. I urge that the San Jose City Council direct the staff to develop a strong ordinance that prohibits all law enforcement officers from concealing their identities. We must uphold full transparency, another favorite word here, of officers, and prioritize safety for everyone. We deserve a city where law enforcement is visible and accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, I'll call the next batch of four names. Cindy Batista, Jeremy Berus, Lawrence Deng, and Dilza Gonzalez. Please come down to the stairs over here. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine Hedges. I run property in D2, a member of SURGE, and you're allied Rapid Response. We need to be protecting our immigrant community. This travesty of masked men coming into neighborhoods and kidnapping people as they try to go to work, as they pick up their kids. This is what was happening in countries. People fled as refugees. We can't let it happen in our city. We need to follow the state's lead in blocking them from hiding their identities. No masks. Must have their badges visible. Must have their agency visible. And we also must prevent, stop the city from letting them use our property for staging, for raids, for whatever. We can't stop Walmart or Target from allowing it, but the city can stop it for themselves. As everyone knows, first it came for the brown people, but it could be the brown people who speak Chinese next, or the people who showed up in a No Kings protest. We need to stop it now. ICE has shown that they will back out of communities or resist enough. We need to resist. Thank you. Please approve both measures.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Cindy Batista. I live in District 1, and also I work with Passos as a community organizer at Secret Heart Community Service. I urge the council member to adopt strong policies that protect our communities by preventing federal immigration enforcement from using city property to carry out harmful actions against families, our families, and by requiring all law enforcement officers, especially and including ICE agents, to remain fully identifiable and accountable. Our city strength lies in its diversity and the trust between residents and local government. Transparency and accountability are essential to public safety. San Jose must ensure that its assets and its officers never use to install fear, but to uphold protection and unity for all who call this city's home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Dilza Gonzalez. I am with Secret Heart and IPEN, and I'm also a District 4 resident. And I am here today to strongly urge you to support for two important items on tonight's agenda, Item 3.9 and Item 4.1. These policies matter deeply to me, my organization, and my community because they represent safety, fairness, and trust. First, it's the right thing to do. As our city leaders, you have the responsibility to protect us all, all San Jose residents, regardless of our backgrounds or where we come from. Second, right now, many of our immigrant communities and everybody that speaks a different language or doesn't look American enough, just like me in majority of these rooms, we are in constant fear of getting kidnapped, of getting taken away from our families. We need to show, you need to show us and our families that San Jose stands with them, not against them. And third, these policies help build the trust our residents need to feel that San Jose is truly a safe place for everyone, a welcoming place. We are asking for strong leadership, not just in words, but in policy and action. So please vote yes on this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mayhem, and members of the City Council. Jeremy Berus with Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment, and we're also part of the IPEN network. We urge the San Jose City Council to be strong leaders for the safety and well-being of our immigrant community and approve both ordinances to set reasonable standards for federal enforcement operating in San Jose and to restrict city property from being misused for immigration enforcement activities, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Ortiz, as well as Councilmembers Candela, Campos, Cohen, Camay, and Duan for signing on to the memos. These are not normal times, and we need courageous leaders to demonstrate their commitment to community, not only in words, but in action through policy and resources. When the federal government attacks constitutional rights and the fundamentals of democracy, we are all under threat, and we must stand with our most vulnerable neighbors. Now, I would like to read a little bit of testimony by one of our immigrant community members who is directly impacted and did not feel comfortable attending today. She says, "Knowing that the city wants to take concrete steps to protect us, such as preventing city property from being used for ICE operations, gives me a lot of hope and peace of mind. I feel like finally our voices are being heard. These proposals mean more than just policies. They mean we are seen as human beings and not as numbers or immigration status. They represent a step toward justice."
Thank you. Before the next speaker begins, I'll call the final group of four. Rebecca Armandares, Ms. Rayan, Mark Trout, and Sean. And then we also have Lori, who was called but has not yet spoken. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Lawrence. So here's the memo. When they come for one, they come for all of us, and seeing ICE with masks, like, wearing masks to apprehend undocumented immigrants is wrong. It is cruel, and it is inhumane. I'm supporting in favor of Item 4.1 and in 3.9. The first one I'll talk about is 4.1, where SB 2627 prohibits the consummation of law enforcement, and SB 805 requires visible, clear identification. We need to be a city that welcomes everybody. I've been, I was born and raised here in San Jose, lived here most of my life, and even through the struggles, San Jose continues to be a thriving city that we can build and be thankful for, that we can be thankful for here. But unfortunately, with ICE activities, it has spread fear. They have committed inhumane, cruel activities, and that is wrong. It hurts so many people. As stated, when they come for one, they come for all of us. And when the worst happens, which is right now in the face of government shutdown, we need to stand together as a community. Right now, we should not tolerate ICE and CBP agents violating our residents' constitutional rights, and we should not let them disregard our federal authority. We must stand united. We must continue to work together, and we need to do everything we can to ensure that we can build a city that welcomes everyone in a diverse state and a diverse democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, I was telling the officer over there something providential, I believe. I just walked in here, wasn't watching you guys, didn't try and time it like this, but I was talking a couple hours ago, after I was preaching at San Francisco State University, to a police officer, and I said, "Officer, I just want to encourage you guys to come on out and help the ICE officers to deport the illegal aliens." And then I come in here, and you're talking about the very subject I was addressing with that officer. But I voted for you, Matt. Now, before I start, how long do I get? I don't see the timer. Oh, wow. Man, okay. It says, "Rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Wilt thou then not be afraid of the power? Do that which is good, and you'll have praise of the same, for he is the minister of God to thee for good." Many times, I'll call a cop reverend, because he's a reverend, even if he's not a Christian, because of his office. But, you know, the fact remains that these ICE officers are heroes. They're doing their duty, and it is against the law to impede a federal officer from doing his duty, and so we need to back them up. Make a proclamation that we are going to support ICE to deport the illegal aliens, okay? We have forty million illegal aliens in here, not twenty, forty million, when they stole the election in 2020. We have proof they stole the election. We all know that they stole the election, and we, as a city council, need to come out strong and say, "Look, we support America, okay? This is not..."
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Your time is concluded.
That's going to be your time, sir. I believe we're at zero time up there. Thank you. All right. Let's give everybody their opportunity to speak. Go ahead.
Always fun to follow a moron. I wholeheartedly support the city ensuring that all city spaces be free of ICE, who should not be able to hide their faces. I also implore the city to provide additional considerations and protections to unhoused, undocumented people to prevent them from becoming more susceptible to ICE. I implore you to create service provider placards for aid workers accessing park trails and city lots to assist unhoused, undocumented people living nearby. Preventing us from providing aid to people is hard to reach. Areas in hard-to-reach areas makes them separate from the item 3.9. I implore you to create a six-month moratorium on all sweeps and RV seizures to prevent unhoused, undocumented people from losing important documents, contacts with support providers, including legal, and becoming more vulnerable. The city making them more vulnerable to ICE, this is not equal to the intent of the item. I implore you to increase staffing, training, and barriers at all shelters. I implore you to post multilingual signage at all unhoused service agencies with immigration assistance information in addition to the Rapid Response Network. I implore you to increase protections outside service providers, where people may queue up, standing in line for aid. Must not be impediments to said aid. I also implore Councilmember Mulcahy to make it clear that ICE is not welcome on any of its many properties.
Thank you. So, we have three cards for people that have not yet come to the podium. We have Rebecca Armandares, Ms. Rayan, and Lori. So your opportunity would be right now to come to the podium. Otherwise, we'll move on.
Thanks, Megan. I'm just pausing for a moment. I don't see anyone else approaching the podium, so I think we will come back to the council. Thank you to everyone who shared a perspective during public comment. I'm going to be brief. We've had a lot of discussion of these topics, but I do want to thank Councilmember Ortiz for his leadership on these issues, colleagues who signed on to memos, IPEN for your work in the community. Over the last quite a few months now, we've heard harrowing stories of residents who are fearful, fearful that masked men with no identification could come and take them from their home, their place of work, even the grocery store, and that their loved ones would not know what happened to them for quite some time. There are people, many in our community are worried they will not be able to tell the difference between law enforcement and kidnappers, and that is unacceptable. In San Jose, our police officers almost never wear masks because they don't need to. They work for and with the community, with a lot of support from the community, and I firmly believe that's why we are, once again, the safest big city in the country. The foundation of public safety is trust. And when there is a trusted relationship built up between law enforcement officials and the community, the people they serve, you get better outcomes because people feel comfortable reporting crime. They feel confident in sharing evidence, serving as witnesses, and engaging in a process that truly is a collective effort. So I just want to recognize Chief Joseph, the department, all of our officers, for the work they do every day to foster that trust. And I would like to see our federal government emulate the approach that we've taken here. And I do understand ICE's responsibility for enforcing immigration laws, but I think we can all agree that it could be done in a much clearer, more consistent, more transparent, fairer, kinder way. fairer, kinder way without the level of fear and uncertainty that's been injected into all of our communities. So I won't go on and on, but I just want to affirm my support for these measures. I do want to just ask two clarifying questions for staff. I think on a similar principle on the city property, we have certain rights and responsibilities as a city. Nora, can you just explain the extent to which the city has a, we believe, a lawful right to restrict the use of city property for immigration enforcement activity? If you could just give us a little more context on what we, at a high level, maybe can and can't expect from this? I don't want to create false expectations for the community either. I do think it's important that we are as clear and accurate about what we can and can't do as possible. So I don't know, Nora, if you could just speak briefly to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This proposal coming forward has to do with city property that might be used as staging areas or things like that with ICE. And it is possible for the city to restrict the use of those properties, but we would want to post, and we would need to chain off areas or things like that. As we've talked about before, and I think is well-understood even in the community, there are some city properties that are open to the public, and we really cannot impede enforcement efforts in those areas that are public, but we are able to protect private spaces in those city properties. And we have done a lot of work to train our staff and inform the public that certain warrants, judicially signed warrants are necessary for ICE to get back into private areas and those kinds of things. So we will be bringing forward an ordinance, if council so directs, dealing with the staging.
Thank you, Nora. I think that's helpful. And then Matt Lesh, quick question for you. Part of the memo on the second item is directing staff to identify city-owned properties that could be commandeered for activities like staging, processing, or establishing an operational base. I think Nora was just speaking of those kinds of activities, as opposed to every last remnant parcel the city owns, just to be clear about that. Just from a staff workload perspective, can you give us a sense of how long we think it'll take for us to just have a sense of what those relevant properties might be?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Matt Lesh, Director of Public Works. We believe we can get this done in the month of November. We're obviously going to try to escalate as much as we can with the 14,000 properties that the city owns or has any rights to. We just want to make sure it's thorough. So it does take a little bit of scrubbing, but we think we can get it done in the month of November.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I appreciate that and appreciate my colleagues' efforts here, and I'm going to turn now to Councilmember Ortiz for his comments and questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues who either on the Rules Committee voted unanimously to move forward both of these items or signed on to our memos. I just wanted to begin as a young man who was raised in a Catholic home by devout Catholic grandmother and attended catechism at St. John Viania. I'd like to start my speech with a Bible verse, this is my first time doing this, but I've also read the Bible, quoting Leviticus, Chapter 19, verses 33 through 34. "When a foreigner resides among you in your land, do not mistreat them. The foreigner residing among you must be treated as your native-born; love them as yourself, for you are foreigners in Egypt. I am the Lord your God." It's important that we don't just quote the verses that agree with us or our argument that we read the Bible entirety, and we understand and live through it in our daily lives. Today, I bring two measures that go to the heart of who we are as a city and what it means to truly serve the people of San Jose. The first ensures that certain city-owned properties, such as parking lots, garages, and open spaces, cannot be commandeered or misused by federal immigration agencies for civil enforcement operations, including staging, processing, or detention. The second ordinance aims to require federal agents to wear visible identification and prohibits the use of face coverings that obscure identity during public interactions. The ordinance also establishes information-sharing protocols between the San Jose Police Department. I want to thank the chief and the department for being a partner as we've been writing these pieces of legislation, as well as the City Manager's Office and community leaders to ensure transparency when federal agencies operate locally. Together, these policies will reflect San Jose's commitment to community safety, accountability, and the protection of immigrant and working-class families across the city. San Jose is a city built by immigrants, originally being named Pueblo de San Jose. Yet, in recent months, federal immigration actions have generated a deep sense of fear, fear that prevents residents from reporting crimes, discourages workers from showing up to work, and keeps entire families from accessing the services they rightfully deserve. When ICE and other federal agencies operate without transparency, and when they use local property as staging grounds, that fear multiplies in our communities. It erodes the trust we've worked so hard to build, and where federal agents cover their faces or conceal their identities while engaging with the public, it sends a message that they are above accountability, and that is truly not the San Jose way. As a welcoming city, we need to send a message that our city resources should only be used to serve our community, regardless of their citizenship, and we will not allow them to be used to enable intimidation or federal immigration raids. I want to thank my colleagues in both Brown Acts for joining me in advancing these efforts. This is what local leadership looks like. When the federal government chooses fear, we choose community. When others look away, we act. I also want to just thank our partners in the Immigrant Protection and Empowerment Network, some of them are here, and the countless residents and advocates who've stood with us for their tireless work to keep families safe and informed. Colleagues, these ordinances are about living up to our values. They say to all of our residents, "You belong here, you are seen, and you are protected." I kindly ask for your "I" vote, and I motion, well, I guess we're going to vote on both of these separately, so I'll end my comment.
Feel free to make a motion on the first item if you'd like, and then we'll come back around.
Okay, then I will motion for 3.9. Thank you.
Great. Megan, I'll let you sort out who got the second. I don't want to upset anybody. I need their votes for things. All right, just kidding. All right, so we will continue on. Again, you can comment on either item. We do have a motion on the floor on 3.9. We'll go to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a brief comment, sharing my gratitude and sincere appreciation for Serge, I-Pen, and the Rapid Response Network for your steadfast commitment to supporting the safety and well-being of our immigrant neighbors. I'm proud to have colleagues like Councilmember Ortiz, Councilmember Candela, Councilmember Kamay, and all of the council colleagues who have been supporting this memo from the start. I am really proud to see San Joseans showing up for the values that we share, and I am committed to standing with our community that is committed to justice for all. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Councilmember Campos, I'll turn now to Councilmember Candela.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I too want to just thank Councilmember Ortiz for his leadership, as well as my colleagues who helped not just co-author the both policies, but have showed up to rallies, who have shown up to, you know, community calls for action, as well as the administration, who has, you know, helped step up to figure out how we can best not just protect our residents, but be able to afford that due process that our country was built on. You know, now, more than ever, it is important to do everything we can to support our immigrant community. You know, as previously mentioned, San Jose was recently named the safest big city, and it is undoubtedly because we are a welcoming city for all, and we will not play a role in targeted attacks against any of our residents. And, you know, I've said this before, over 41% of our residents who call San Jose home identify as immigrants, and that majority of whom have long settled here in the United States for more than 10 years. And as a proud son of immigrants, I know that we don't build a stronger San Jose by turning our backs to our residents when they need us most, and we build a stronger San Jose by standing with our immigrant community with policies that ensure that city property is for city uses and when our residents trust our local law enforcement. More than 40% of our residents who call San Jose home identify as immigrants, most of whom have been settled in the country for more than 10 years.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate those words, and let's go to Councilmember Tordeos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak briefly to some of the impacts we've already seen in our local District III community from the current climate and all of the fear circulating. You know, we've seen a dramatic reduction in the number of folks who come out to community events. I've talked to local nonprofits who say that they've seen a plummeting in the number of people who come out seeking their services. We know that we have unhoused folks who've expressed that they're afraid to engage with city outreach workers, and longer term, I have real worries that that fear is going to result in some real impacts in terms of public safety. So I want to thank Councilmember Ortiz, as well as Councilmembers Campos, Candela, Kamay, Cohen, and Dwan for their leadership and advocating on behalf of our immigrant communities, and I will be proudly supporting both of these items. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz, for your leadership on both of these issues and for bringing them to rules, and now we see them here so that we can vote on them as a council and move them forward. I will be supporting both of them. I do want to give a shout-out, actually, and a thank you to Police Chief Paul Joseph for your support of the mask ordinance as well, because that will affect your officers and how your officers identify themselves, and masks prohibit them from wearing face coverings that will obstruct their faces. So I appreciate you being open and willing to work on that issue as well. We are in the most horrible times that we've ever been, and I, together, supporting the immigrant community is important for all of us to stand up and say enough is enough, and we support our immigrant community, and we support those around us, and we speak for them when they cannot speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the speakers. As an immigrant to this country, we must unite, we stand together to make sure that we protect our immigrants. And I hear you, I stand with you, and I will be supporting both of the item 3.9 and 4.1 as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank the people in the audience who are here, who are on the front lines of this issue every day. This is not what you signed up for, but we find ourselves in a difficult time, and I really appreciate, you know, way more than those of us up here, you are the ones interacting with community every day, dealing with the impacts of what we're seeing from this federal government. You know, and as the federal government demonizes and dehumanizes, our role as a city is to protect. In order to keep our community safe, we need to make sure that people trust their law enforcement, and so this is an important action. Obviously, regardless of issues of supremacy and federal government, we also have to model what we believe to be the right behavior in our city. And I want to thank our police department for already having a policy in place, but this codifies that policy into city ordinance that we will make sure that our officers are identifiable and behave in an appropriate way as they interact with people on our streets. You know, it's disappointing, as I talked, for example, talked last week with the CEO of the Second Harvest Food Bank and talked about the great interactions that California helping them at their sites, but they're saying, "We don't, unfortunately, we can't take advantage of that offer from the state right now to have National Guard at our sites" because people no longer know what law enforcement agencies they can trust and which ones they can't. And people are, might not take service if they see any kind of force or any kind of agencies at these locations, and that's just disappointing what, in such a short time, has happened to damage the reputation of law enforcement and our military. So I'm happy to support this policy, to set an example of what we should be doing in local government, and hopefully someday again in federal government in terms of a relationship with our residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Let's go to Councilmember Kamay.
A lot has been said that I agree with, with all my colleagues. I want to thank all the speakers today for sharing your thoughts on this issue, and I want to thank my colleagues for our memo, as well as for the support for the community. And I really believe that everyone in our community deserves to feel safe. And with that, I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that. All right, well, thank you all for your comments and support for this work. It will continue, and I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. All right. We are going to go back on the agenda to item 3. Oh, I'm so sorry, we didn't get the other motion.
Move for approval for the other item.
There we go. It's a formality of that. My apologies. All right. Great. Doesn't look like we have any other hands. Let's vote on item 4.1. My apologies. Thank you all for catching that.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you all. All right. Thank you. We're going to continue on by going back to item 3.7. This is the Citywide Capital Improvement Program Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024/2025. We have a staff presentation. I'll turn it over to Matt and Catherine.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Matt Lesh. I'm the Director of Public Works, and with me is Catherine Brown, the Assistant Director. I'm being told to lean forward in the microphone and use my outside voice, so I'll do my very best. I'm Matt Lesh, I'm the Director of Public Works, and with me is Catherine Brown, the Assistant Director of Public Works. After this, as I talk about "we," it's not just "we" here, or "we" just Public Works. It'll be talking about all of the folks that deliver the capital improvement program for you and deliver our projects. So again, when we say "we," it's our folks and it's our partners in DOT, and PRNS, and ESD, and Airport, and every place that has capital project teams, both on the program side, funding side, and everything else that we use to deliver these projects for you. So first off, a brief overview. We'll talk about the overview of the programs as a whole. We'll talk about some CIP and the numbers, and how we did on procurement, because that's always how we focus on what we bring to you in terms of our contractors and talent. And then we'll focus on some project highlights. Back one page. GIP by the numbers. One, there we go. Okay. So as you see in the overview, this is what we talked about in June, after you have long deliberations. This is the end cap of what we talked about in June, what we prospectively say what we will deliver for you. You hustle us through that nice presentation, give us the ominous ominous, and tell us to move on our way and get these things done. All of these areas- All of these areas, whether it's building our community centers, our water system, police facilities, corp yards, these are all the projects and programs that get touched in the CIP. We have general outcomes that are listed here, but the whole focus is to make this safe, attractive, and useful facilities for our residents and the employees that use these to deliver services to the residents. So we like big numbers. We have 328 active construction projects, and that's anything from ideation and feasibility all the way through design and construction, project closeout, and delivery. That value of those projects in flight are at $1.8, $1.9 billion. There are 236 projects over this major projects threshold of $740,000. And so you'll, I'll list several times majors and minors. Major projects are projects of a value over $340,000. So last year, we had in-flight 236 of those projects, and 92 of them were minor. That's under $740,000. And we completed, closed out, all the projects and all the contracts of 73 of those projects from the year before. Per our budget book and how we report these, 93% of our projects were completed on budget. Our target is 90%, and so we exceeded our budget target of being on budget last year. Our projects for completion, 85% of our were completed on time. That is on target with what our goal is. Our objective is at least 85% or more. We're obviously interested in achieving more than that. And when you think about what "on time" means, is that at the time of award of the construction, we say we will have beneficial use of that site, or whatever thing we're building, within two months of that date. When you have a nice six-month project, that's pretty easy. When you have a four-year project that gets a pretty narrow window when you're going to land that project. And so, but 85% of our projects are delivered on time. So of those 328 and the $1.85 billion, you see the two concentric circles. On the inside is the numbers of projects in the CSAs, in the respective CSAs, and the dollar value of them. And you can see the very large portions in the transportation piece and in the environmental piece, both with all the paving projects and roadway and sewer projects, and then also in the regional wastewater facility at the massive projects that are going on in that CIP. Of the completed projects, the 73 completed projects, roughly half of them or so were in the neighborhood services group. And so again, seeing these colors, for those of us in the narrow colors, it makes it hard, but you can see the breakdown of where these projects were in the different areas. We take our procurement responsibility very seriously in finding responsible contractors to deliver our projects for them. And one of the things we always track is how, what is that bidding environment? We'll talk about that in just a little bit more detail in the next slide. But for all of our major projects and minor projects, we have at least four, on average, four bidders for every one of our projects. That's a, it gives us a temperature check on the competitiveness of the market in terms of construction. Of those projects, of those 83 awarded projects, 53 of them were major, and 30 of them were minor. So we awarded 80 projects, so you think about how many, we're averaging about six a month that were awarding construction contracts. Of those four project bids per average, we had estimated total of 330 bidders were received for all of our construction projects. And so we issued out, like I said, 83 construction wards for $200 million. Okay, this is the local business enterprise and small business enterprise slides of how we let out our contracts. On the left side is for our majors, on the right side is for our minors. What you'll notice is the trends, we're always watching for trends. Year over year, it's not, like, one year over year, it's not that thing. We look for long-term, ongoing trends. And when you look at the $740,000 mark for majors and minors, over time, as construction gets expensive, we try to have, we have a CPI that moves that up or down and aligned into the construction costs, but we're seeing that we're having more and more construction projects at, tipping over into that major threshold. We'll see how things go over these next few years, but we keep watching that as well. And we see, and we, it's typical that we wouldn't have too many small business enterprises taking on some of our larger contracts. They just don't have the wherewithal to pull those off, and that's why we really look at the detail of where our minors are going and really try to maximize the number of our minor award contracts going to our smalls and our local contractors so that they can get their foot in the door to do some of our construction work, and then hopefully partner with and become subs to some of our larger contractors. And that's where we have, annually, we have this Meet the Primes event where we bring in our smaller contractors to meet the bigger contractors, to network and create relationships, and also just to grow so they can become more efficient and effective. And now we'll talk about some successes in project delivery.
All right, on to the pretty pictures. So I'm going to cover some of the CSAs and just talk through some of the projects that we've completed, as well as some of the ones that we have ongoing. The first CSA that we're going to cover is the Community and Economic Development. This is primarily focused on our Rule 20 undergrounding projects. In this picture, this is the Delmas West San Fernando Project. And again, these Rule 20B projects are developer-funded for specific projects. Like, they fund some of the improvements to underground the overhead utilities. There are five active projects and one completed during this fiscal year, or the last fiscal The next CSA is Neighborhood Services. The image in this slide is the Almaden Lake All-Inclusive Park. This project contractor award was $1.4 million and reached beneficial use in February of this year. This is an all-inclusive playground of about half an acre for all ages and skill levels with sensory and physical play for children of all abilities. Other notable projects in this CSA that are ongoing are some of our trail projects, the Starbird and Hammond Todd Lot Project, and the North San Pedro Basset Park Projects. The next CSA, the Environmental and Utility Services, this is the second-largest CSA both by dollar value and by number of projects. So we have a total number of 109 active projects in this CSA and completed over two dozen projects. The picture is highlighting the Filter Rehabilitation Project out at the Regional Wastewater Facility. So my notes say that it operates at an average of 110 million gallons per day, which is the largest tertiary filtration facility in the western United States. And this project replaced filter media and upgraded this to a modern air scorned system. Other notable projects within this CSA that are ongoing are all of the storm sewer piping projects, our green stormwater infrastructure projects, as well as some of the large install and small trash capture device projects. Moving on to Transportation and Aviation Services CSA, this is the largest CSA with the largest number of projects and dollar value. So we have a total of 118 projects in this CSA with a five-year CAP dollar value of $1.7 billion. The project highlighted is the Mount Pleasant Pedestrian and Bike Safety Improvement Project. This installed new park strips and added 48 ADA compliant curb ramps at various locations throughout this corridor. Some other active projects that are ongoing in this CSA include some of our local street pavement projects. The Center Road Project that was approved earlier is also in this CSA, as well as Better Bikeway and Taxi Way Victor Projects out at the airport. Our Public Safety CSA, we wanted to highlight the PD Air Support Unit Hanger Relocation. We don't have any projects that were completed in this last fiscal year, but we anticipate having several to highlight in next year's report. The air unit support hanger is a contract value of about $12.6 million, and this is relocating from the, I believe, west, east side to west side. I was wrong. And this is building a new one-story building with office area and two hangar bays, one for the helicopter and one for a fixed-wing aircraft. Next, we have our Strategic Support CSA, highlighting the tech interactive chillers and cooling tower replacement. Who doesn't love a good crane project? The contract award on this one is about $3.7 million. We have a total of 26 projects in this CSA valuing about $135 million. This specific project replaced the existing water cooler chillers and the cooling tower at the Tech Interactive Museum and reached beneficial use earlier this year. And last but not least, just highlighting some other--
Process. Do we have, or maybe you could provide a little insight, Matt, on the local preference for business and what that looks like in the bidding process for our city?
Thanks for the question. So there's two criteria that come in, and we use the same process for local, small. First, you have to be local, then you can be small, and I always mix those up like it's smalls and locals. You have to be one, then the other. And as a requirement, you have to have a business unit or with people in it of 35 people or less to be small, and in Santa Clara County to be local. And so we do have, and then on our minor projects, we do have a 5% incentive that we have added in, in 2022. And so we're tracking that to see what effect that is, and you can say, well, there's a big bump up between '21 and 2022. Minors move around quite a bit, and it really depends on the type of work that we issue out that year. That's why I'm looking for a five-year trend to see if it really is impactful towards the type of contractors we have.
Got it. Do we have a, say, like a San Jose preference, or a local, like something more localized than a Santa Clara County preference for our--
We do not. Santa Clara County is the only preference in terms of local. And then we have, and that's the same as what we use for purchasing. We use the same standard as they do.
Right. I mean, have we considered, or maybe you can share your thoughts on, on a San Jose preference? It could be percentage. I know the city of Santa Ana, for example, gives a 7% preference to Santa Ana businesses for bidding, and, you know, there's several, several cities across the state that give a actual preference to those projects that are bidding, you know, that may not, you know, that may not get it based on other criteria, but I think, you know, when we have, you know, I've heard several examples of a contractor having, or a company having an office, say, in Sunnyvale, but headquartered in another county, in other part of the Bay Area, but, you know, they do have that, that office, you know, say, in Milpitas or Sunnyvale. Well, there is actual companies that are, you know, based in San Jose that bid on our projects, and that, you know, they are competitive with the price, and, you know, the bid goes to other, those other companies. Have we, have we thought about that? And if so, I'd love to have your feedback on that.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we've studied this a couple of times, and we'll certainly, we'll go back and look at it again to see if it would be materially changed what would be the outcome. Because again, they have to beat them on price as well, and so whether they're local or small sometimes doesn't matter in terms of pricing. It does a little bit on the incentive, but in terms of, are there that big of clientele that it would eliminate, is there an actual pool that would demonstrably move some off the table? And at that time, we didn't see that there was a pool, and we studied all the prior bids to see, you know, if those things, if a different consideration of this geography would change something, or a twist of the local, small. Since we don't have, they just basically, they say, yes, we have less than 35. They don't say we have 27 or 42. We don't have that type of minute detail to see whether, if we change the number difference, if that would matter, or if we change the way the county-city thing would done. We didn't study that, but we looked at what we currently had bid, and we said it wouldn't be a lot of material difference, but we'll certainly look at it again, and we'll be happy to report out next year again.
No, thank you, Matt. And obviously, you know, it has to be lowest, lowest bid, lowest responsible bid, and so, you know, I think that's, that should be precedent because we, these are public dollars, and we have to be judicious to the taxpayer so they get the most, so we get the most bang for the buck and ensure projects get completed on time. But, but at the same time, seeing, seeing if, if we can, you know, provide, you know, a local, like a San Jose incentive is something that I think, I think would, I would love to see the data on that and see if, if it may or may not make the difference. And ultimately, if it's, even if it's just a, even if it's a, if, a minor incentive on a bid, you know, ultimately, at the, at the end of the day, they have to be competitive and be able to do the work. So I think that, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Yes, if we let out 83 contracts, we did 83, at least 83 solicitations likely. Sometimes we did multiple things. We had rebid it multiple times sometimes, and so we have at least 83 solicitations that happened last year. And how many of them would materially be moved? And so we've studied that, we'll continue to study it, and we'll certainly bring back a little bit more nuance in next year's report for you to see if it would make a difference. The hard thing is, we're putting up, we put a lot of hoops into our contractors that they have to jump through, and then we say, you have to be able to respond to this, otherwise you don't get to participate. And they, I just don't want to make, one thing, I don't want to make it harder for our contractors.
Right. Neither do I, and we're not talking--
I know that's not your intent. I just, that's the thing, we'd have to think through how we do that to make sure that it's an easy thing and easy to officiate, to make sure that we don't make it harder.
And obviously, obviously, there's a difference between having a requirement to being able to bid, as opposed to being, being a criteria or a check-the-box like, hey, you know, we're bypassing a competitive proposal and foregoing an opportunity for a San Jose-based business, for a business that's based in, say, you know, Reading, no offense to those folks in Reading, but, but, you know, they're, they're apples to apples. So that being said--
Yeah, and the only last thing I'll say to that is, and it's not to refute it, and we'll certainly add more, just like you're asking, and we'll certainly study some more, just like you're asking, is likely those large companies that have a larger headquarters someplace else are bidding on our major contracts anyways, and they don't get any incentive in bidding on our major contracts for those things. It's only on the minors, so it's, it's pretty, so, and they're likely not that interested in having these. And it's, so, again, what, is it one or two that would make a difference? And that's the thing, we'll study it, and we'll come back to you. And so that, those are the, you asked me what I think about it, and these are the things I think about.
Yeah, that's what I get for asking an engineer, you know, a question, right?
I'll pound you with precision as best I can.
Thank you, Matt.
Before, I was trying to make you happy, now not so much.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Councilmember O'Kee.
Thanks, Mayor. I wasn't going to ask this question, but since he's at it or make this comment, let's just make sure they just don't have a PO box in the county, and that they actually have brick and mortar and a body count in, in the vicinity. You don't need to answer that. It's just a statement. Hey, on the 85%, this, so thank you, Matt and Catherine, for the report. I mean, the scope and scale of what you work on is just, you know, I know you're having a blast doing it because it's just such a variety, right? I'm curious, on the 15% of the projects you're not finding yourselves delivering on time, are there any themes that you're finding? Is it, you know, the types of projects? Is it, you know, capacity? What are you dealing with in terms of where you're missing timelines?
It's everything. And one, and it's, that's where, and I hate to have that answer, because it could be, there's varying ways that we can get extensions to deadlines based on range delays or material supply shortages, or anything like that. And so it's any number of things. Some complexity that was in a particular project that's different. You asked, are there any themes that struck out to us? And the answer is, no, not really. And we always try to see, like, are these sewer projects really not able to deliver on time? What's the reason? And we always try to, we do lesson learned on every single project. And it's a theme that we brought up on housing projects. We do lesson learns on every construction project and discuss them, like, what can we do better? And so I don't think, to answer you very directly, we don't have themes that say, can we get this? And I think the most we've ever seen usually is up to maybe 90% on-time delivery in terms of all of them. And so we're not that far off meeting our bogey. We met our bogey, but we're not that far off from our highs of meeting the bogey either in our prior reports.
Okay, you didn't quite walk into my next one, but my next one is--
I'll saunter then.
I mean, you guys are in architecture, design, civil engineering, right? You've got the whole shoot and match. Are you currently utilizing AI for any of those, you know, in any of those areas, and are you considering adding more tools?
How did I walk into it with that one? That's a very distant, I mean, that would have been a leap. We are, we are exploring AI on one front right now, and that is in sewer assessment. There are some sewers, because we attempt to get through all, video camera and assess all of our sanitary sewer pipes, the 2,000 miles of sanitary sewer pipes every 10 years. And so it's about 2,000 miles that we had chunk in, we try to chunk it into 10% of the city at a time. It's very mundane work, that people are having to stare inside the pipes and see any anomalies, see root intrusion, see pipes that are punctured, people that haven't told us about connections and so forth. AI is something that we're exploring. We have one contract right now. We're doing a pilot of that. There are some other cities that jumped whole hog on it. They're saying mixed results. We also don't know if it's cost-effective. It might be faster, but it might not be cost-effective. And so we're exploring it on one project to see if that's a replacement, but in terms of other AI, we're not using AI presently on any other project that I'm aware of.
Not yet, but open to it.
I'm open to all sorts of things, yes.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
At least it didn't call it a dumb question.
At least it didn't call it a dumb question. All right, we'll go, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right, we'll go to Councilor Kame next.
Thank you so much for the the report. I know that this report, you know, focuses on everything that was accomplished and all of that. But as we look at the five-year capital improvement program, you know, one of the things that I'm sort of like. Not overly concerned, but I I wonder about, right? In terms of, in terms of, you know, I know that we have a lot of deferred maintenance and all of that. So, you know, how do we, how do we balance what needs to be done today? And the priorities that the city council and the mayor set, you know, through the budget process and all of that? And what is, you know, like bursting at the seams? And, you know, obviously, we want to be able to get to it and 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 improve it and do different things. And and I I just wonder, you know, in terms of all the capital improvement program, is that just all the new stuff, all the shiny stuff?
Not at all. The the crane thing that Catherine showed, there was a broken chiller that was on top of that that we needed to replace. And it, because it was not repairable, the repairs are about a million, replacements are about six. And so we try to repair and repair and repair.
So it is, it is something.
There are replacements of improving. We do lots of things at fire stations and the police department, at community centers and libraries, active existing buildings. We do things here at this facility, at our our corp yards. Even all, if you think of all of our existing pipes in the parks, they're all existing places that we're either replacing or repairing. And so the new things would be like the Measure T. stuff for Fire Station Eight or Fire Station Thirty-two and Thirty that's coming along. And so all the new ones, those things are net new.
So how do you, how do you distinguish which ones can be this year? And, you know, as you look at the five-year capital program, you know, uh. Do you just kind of like take a look at conditions of everything and say, oh, these are the things that need to move now?
So some of it's the color of money, where the particularly the pro- the pots of money are coming from, of how those things are. So certain segments of the, certain CSAs have more money or less that we can invest in those. We're certainly talking to our maintenance teams. The, I mean, there's some of the largest drivers are saying like, this thing is causing us a lot of headaches. That's what that chiller replacement was. And so like, they're saying, we're spending a lot of money repairing this thing. We need to get this replaced. And so we, and same thing with our sanitary sewers, with our D O. T. maintenance crews are telling us, this is sending us to go look at this thing. This is causing us massive problems. And we're having to go out there every week to clean it. And so we need to get out there and take a look at it. Regional wastewater facility is an example. We're replacing basically the entire plant over time. And so there's airport, we're building all sorts of new, they're net new things. But we're also replacing some existing things that the fire station were, and the the fire station that we moved over recently, the employee staff building that we moved over to the west side. And then now the hangar, we're moving all of these things to different places that were net failing. At some point, you meet the life expectancy of the building and it's time to go.
And all I want to add is that the the Public Works Department does an excellent job of giving the Budget Office those assessments during the budget process. And then there's meetings among budget staff and other leadership, along with P P W. and and the different departments to debate and decide, you know, what we can, you know, what goes forward in each given budget. So it's pretty solid recommendations. And things that can't be supported by the different funding sources that are that have specific restrictions on them. Obviously, fall to the general fund. And so we try to prioritize some of our one-time funding towards that. And or give you a a list during the budget process of things that we would like to get to or know are coming up, like the waterproofing of this building, which I think was somewhere in the order of close to forty million dollars. That's that's coming up. So we're we're constantly doing assessments of that and also thinking about what, you know, future bonds we might need to do as well as other ways to get grants.
Excellent. And I just want to give you kudos on our one-on-ones when you came forward with all of the information in terms of all the wonderful things that are happening in District One. So I want to say how much I appreciate it because some of the, some of the work that you do is a little bit hidden, you know, and we don't see it until it comes forward at this time. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thanks, council member. Yeah, I'll just echo the thanks. The the projects you and your teams and partners in other departments deliver have a huge impact on people's experience of our city and and make people proud to be residents of San Jose. So I just want to thank you guys and your teams for all the hard work you do and for this report. Thank you. All right, let's vote.
Do we have a motion for this item?
We did, from Councilor Kondelis.
Thank you. One second. Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome. All right. Thank you all. We're on to item eight point one, grant agreement with We Hope for Operations at the Arena Hotel Interim Housing Project. We have a staff presentation, so we'll give Eric and Cupid a moment to get settled in.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Sullivan, Director of Housing. And with me is Deputy Director Cupid Alexander. And today, we're going to just speak to a brief overview here of the changes we're making at the Arena Hotel. This was, as I'll provide some quick history about this, original Home Key project that was entered into just about four years ago. And this site has had some challenges, but there's still significant opportunities here to improve the overall operations. And we'll talk through some of the changes we're going to be making here to look forward to how we're going to stabilize some of the financing based on an agreement. We have reached with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority that their board recently passed. And then three, how we're going to redevelop the site. And the work that we have been doing with H C. D. to acknowledge some of the challenges that occur. When that we're experiencing this city with coming up with, you know, podium tower style builds, which is what this site was originally envisioned for. And doing that with extremely low A M. I. targets. And so we've been working with H C. D. to recast this project and to bring forth a project that is more economically feasible. And so that's kind of the quick history on it. And I'll just provide some quick facts. And then Cupid will go through some of the details as to how this new operation is going to be in the place. And the new service provider we're bringing to the table. So as I mentioned, about four years ago, this is about a Home Key project that was done. The target for this was to convert this from its current interim housing site into permanent housing. So this opened up back in twenty twenty-three in August. And we have, it was originally eighty-nine unit beds. It's been operating over the last six months. Through much improved operations, trying to mitigate some of the impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. But with that also came in an acknowledgement that it's time to look at a refresh of the site, look at some transition opportunities. And identify ways in which we can, over the next three years, us continue to improve and stabilize operations and get to a more aggressive plan. To rebuild it, acknowledging the incoming funds from the Santa Clara County Housing Authority that'll help stabilize some of the operations at the site. This is part and parcel to the overall repositioning that we've been doing and looking at the entire interim housing portfolios we discussed earlier today. Which by the time Matt Lush and his team complete Sironi later this year, will be at twenty-two sites across the city, totaling just over two thousand beds. So we're managing a large portfolio. And so with that comes a charge to look at that portfolio from an asset management perspective. And how are we best managing to the efficiencies of operations at each of these sites? And in this case, for this particular site, not only its efficiency of operations, but its eventual rebuild. And so Cupid?
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Cupid Alexander, Deputy Director, and my work focuses on the unsheltered response, grants and data. So I'll take a few moments to walk through the current operational challenges and opportunities at the Arena Hotel, as well as where we're heading next as we continue our repositioning of the arena. So the arena is one of our more complex interim housing sites because of where it's located, right in the heart of a busy business district along the Alameda. That visibility has its benefits, but it also presents unique operational challenges. The site experiences high pedestrian activity, nearby business traffic, and significant daily movement around the corridor. To ensure safety and community alignment, we've expanded onsite security staffing and we work closely with our local partners. From a funding standpoint, the original Home Key allocation limited the staffing model so we could sustain it. To keep this site stable, we supplemented operations with Measure E. funds, which allowed us to maintain appropriate staffing levels and responsive coverage. On the redevelopment front, the original plan to convert the Arena Hotel into permanent affordable housing development has had its delays. Given the current construction costs and financing constraints, the original concept proved financially infeasible. In response, we've issued a new request for proposals to identify a qualified development partner to bring forward a viable redevelopment plan for the site. We've also continued to focus on managing neighborhood impacts. To address this, we're leveraging our internal support team. So thank you, Beautify San Jose. And then we also have our internal S J. Bridge Program. That's our relationship with the goodwill to employ individuals who are unhoused, and they've provided some cleanup support. And we've also leveraged our outreach services and resources to connect individuals in the adjacent areas. Over the course of this last year, we've also utilized the Community Advisory Committee to maintain open communications, respond to community concerns. And strengthen neighborhood compatibility and safety. Those ongoing partnerships have been critical to keeping the site integrated into the surrounding community. While it continues to serve its intended purpose. So moving forward and looking ahead, we're focused on strengthening operations, ensuring a seamless transition in management. And securing long-term financial stability for the program. We Hope will assume operations and management of the Arena site. They bring strong experience in interim housing, case management and community-based services. If that rings a bell to you, they are our B A R I E S A. operator. So they operate B A R I E S A. right now. Under their leadership, the program will maintain a comprehensive structure that includes supportive services, property management, building maintenance and site security. At the same time, the city has an active procurement process underway to identify a new developer for the next phase of the project. This ensures we're advancing both the short-term operational needs and the long-term vision for the site. One of the most important steps forward is what Eric mentioned, which is the subsidy layering partnership with the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority Board has approved two point one million dollars per year for the next three years to help support operations at the Arena. This will allow us to maintain staffing, strengthen services and help more residents transition into permanent housing. This approach, which is commonly called subsidy layering, positions the site for long-term sustainability. In short, our focus is on continuity, stability and outcomes. With We Hope managing day-to-day operations, the Housing Authority partnership supporting financial sustainability and redevelopment planning underway. The Arena is positioned to assist individuals coming indoors while providing stability and a path forward for those most in need. With that, I'll turn it back over to Eric to close us out.
So thank you, Cupid. So that's just a quick summary of how we're repositioning this site. This is the beginning part of looking at some of our more older sites as part of our overall shelter system to look at opportunities. To ensure that we're maximizing operational efficiencies, we talked about earlier this evening, as well as some repositioning opportunities to ensure that this entire portfolio is viewed not just. As a continuing service to our unsheltered residents as well as their pets. I will note, we run about, we have about close to four hundred pets within this shelter system, rivaling the current Animal Shelter Center. So it is a large system for both humans and their pets. And this system is constantly being updated and reviewed from an asset management perspective to ensure. We're getting the best use of all of these dollars. So thank you.
Great. Thank you for that update. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. We have two speaker cards. Gail and Sean, please make your way to the podium.
On the subject of pets, I just wanted to bring up one issue. I think, because I know there's been several pet issues. I think everywhere, it would be great if people who are moving into these places and out of camps went through a training. An animal behavior class for the pet as well as for the person, because a lot of these pets aren't, have never lived inside and neither have the people. So I think it's something that would be great for everybody. I think they would benefit from that because I'm seeing it right now at the hotels. And so that's what I think is a good idea. One of my things I wholeheartedly support, We Hope, I think I was one of the first people to mention it and say, hey, maybe we should do We Hope. But anyway, my one concern is because now I'm hearing We Hope, We Hope, We Hope in a lot of different arenas. I just don't want them to be the next Home First, because Home First had every contract everywhere and things went south. So I just want us to be cautious and make sure that we have We Hope and this group and this group and this group and this group. And balance things out so that we're not doing another too big to fail kind of thing. I think that it's really, really important. And it, the thing that we're most here to serve is unhoused people and make sure that we get them off the streets successfully into a whole other life forever. Not just so that we write a report and it's good for six months and we got another person. Because what I see a lot of is people just going in a door and out a door and in a door and out a door. And I don't want to see that happen again. And the arena has been a mess and other places are a mess. So if we could just make sure that we don't create another too big to fail. Love We Hope. If we could do that, that would be great. And I think that animal training for everybody before they move in would be a benefit to the pet as well as the people.
Thank you. It appears Gail might no longer be in attendance, but we have a new card from Chris. Chris, please make your way down.
Hello. It's nice to see everybody here. It's been a while. I'm Christopher and I live at the Arena Hotel. Once again, things are being done without us even even knowing the future of what our stay is. Like, we we were unaware of this meeting. It's, we haven't even had a community meeting since since the transition happened from when we lost our last council member. But, you know, at 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 the Arena Hotel, I've learned a lot there. And I've seen a lot of the mistakes that are that are happening there are are now happening at other. Other sites such as the 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 all-girls site. Things like the animal attacks are still happening to 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 the residents. And and there needs to be something done about that. It's nice that that you guys are, that that they're implementing certain dog policies. That that restrict dogs from from being being off a leash. But if but if they don't have some sort of muzzle, then 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 the dog is going to attack. And, you know, it happens. Dog bites happen. Like, my dog was viciously attacked twice within within a three-day period. And he ran away. And it was the most horrific thing that I had to go through. And to and to hear how Home First handled it was something that I never wanted anybody else to go through. So I had to file a lawsuit just to make things happen like once again. But it's it's been an interesting experience with Home First. It's nice to have a new provider in-house. I think I think We Hope has a great history from from their beginnings. I remember when I first learned about We Hope and their showers that they provided in the community, it was a very unique, unique story. And I look forward to their providing services in our facility. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. And it appears Gail is not here, so back to council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to our public speakers. Councilor Moké, let me turn to you first.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to acknowledge Eric and Cupid. I think we first met at those C A. C. meetings. I think Cupid, you and I were probably the newest faces in the room. And, you know, they were difficult conversations under difficult circumstances. And I just can't thank you enough for how much attention you've put, not just on the challenges that are happening every day. But the sort of the systemic challenges that were created by that Home Key project in the first place. And the fact that you've stuck with it. I know that I speak on behalf of certainly the Alameda Business Association, the residents. You know, who have who have been kind of loyal followers and and challenged by some of the things there. But also the residents who have also, and you've heard from Chris, who I also met at the C A. C.'s early on, Christopher, excuse me. And just the fact that we're. the CACs early on, Christopher, excuse me, and just the fact that we're here making some decisions to move forward to create a better circumstance for that property. So, thank you. I want to have you elaborate a little bit more on some of the specific challenges that were associated with this site. Eric, probably you're the best to address it, particularly given that it was a Home Key project. I think, you know, some of us may know more about those than others, and share any insights into how those factors have contributed to the difficulties and kind of the decision we're making today.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mokahi, for that question. So, Home Key program, you know, provided a good opportunity, you know, during a peak time of needing to bring individuals indoors to acquire the site and invest in converting it and doing some significant, but not complete, but significant construction to prepare the site. It also came with stipulations regarding the service to close to 60 units of under 30% formerly homeless individuals. And for a downtown project where you need to build a tower, and as we've seen with the Gateway Tower, that required a collaborative effort of city, county, Housing Authority putting $70 million in public funding into it in order to bring the tower out of the ground, as well as, you know, conversations and negotiations with the county to raise the AMI floor, acknowledge PSH is not a serviceable population for this type of physical build. The Arena Hotel suffers from that same challenge, is the eventual redevelopment of this site and the necessity to service, you know, 30% below AMI, that's out of sync with the type of build that's needed to come back at that location. And this is the conversation that we have opened up with HCD to request sort of a recasting of this project in order to get to one that is financially feasible. And this is where we have to sort of sync up the expectations and sort of the intended use of the site and policy around that with what is economically feasible for bringing back forth the site. And we appreciate the Housing Authority coming through to give us another three-year run, reduce some of our operating costs within the system. Now, within those three years, as we're putting out, we already put out an RFP to bring in a new developer, we need to also have the conversation about what is an economically feasible project at this site going forward, and where are some restrictions with Home Key, because we're going to have a similar challenge with Pacific Motor Inn to raise that AMI floor.
So, it's encouraging to know that we've got interest in the long-term redevelopment play of this particular site. Can you talk about the, you know, what our goals might be for the redevelopment, perhaps, you know, your hopeful timeline for how we might be able to kind of roll this out?
Yeah, so, we have an RFP out now to bring in a new developer as part of a complete sort of refresh of the team at this site. We're hoping to secure that new developer by the end of this calendar year. And with that, quickly, over the next three to four months, recast the project of what is doable, and go back to HCD to say, here is a feasible project for how this can be rebuilt. Here is the amount of funding that the city may have available to invest in it, maximize leveraging of tax credits and other resources of project to hopefully get it into a funding cycle by the end of 2026, and then maybe come out of construction sometime beginning of '28. That would be the goal, and then that'll basically cover sort of our three-year sprint that we have of commitment from the Housing Authority towards financial resources. And then that will allow us, hopefully within that sprint of time, really try to align the requirements of Home Key with the fiscal realities of our current economic condition for building towers in the city, and hopefully reconcile those two. Where it's still an affordable project, but maybe it focuses more on workforce, which is what the Gateway Tower allowed us to set that precedent for, and then hopefully subsequently set that precedence for the Pacific Motor Inn rebuild as well.
So, there's going to be an in-the meantime, right? And so, now we have We Hope that will be our onsite manager. Can you talk about the timing of that? And I, what I want to make sure is, what I'm concerned about, and I know, because we've been hearing, and maybe Cupid, this is a good one for you to help us answer, you know, sort of the in-the meantime, in the transition between Home First and We Hope, there's a period of time when that's going to happen. And the concern in the community currently is, you know, look, I have had this experience as a property owner where you got somebody on the way out, they sort of care less about certain things until they turn it over to the next one. I want to make sure we have a plan to make sure that, you know, Home First, you know, doesn't shirk any responsibilities as they're passing the baton over to We Hope. Can you talk about how we're going to prevent that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Councilmember Mokahi, for the question. So, right now, as of November the 18th, that is the expectation for We Hope to step in. We will still have Home First onsite until December. We had an intentional transition period to avoid that. We've already engaged with the conversation on both We Hope and Home First moving so we can have a seamless transition. And to the point that you mentioned with Home First, we've been very clear. Eric has had personal conversations with their CEO. We've had an expansion of our EIH portfolio, and we are making it very clear that if you want to participate in this, we have expectations, and we will be following up on those expectations for the Arena. We've had an intentional effort to make sure there was that overlap period, so we wouldn't have any balls dropped.
Great. And I think it would be helpful, and we heard from Christopher, you know, there has been limited communication by the onsite provider with the residents of the Arena Hotel historically. So, perhaps we can talk offline and figure out a good communication plan, and if the managers aren't going to do it, perhaps we should be doing that proactively to make sure people know what's happening on the ground. The Business Association, the nearby residents who have been participating in some of those meetings are more aware of the transition that is occurring, but I think we should consider the residents of the property currently so that they know what's happening. And I'd appreciate your support in doing that.
Yes, we can certainly do that, and we can look to ensure that the residents are duly informed, set up a community meeting to talk about the transition, and work with all the parties.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'll move to approve the grant agreement with We Hope on item 8.1.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate all your thoughtful questions and how closely you have engaged with operators, CAC, and other neighbors, city staff, and really thrown yourself into the operation of this site from day one. I appreciate it. I think it's what we all have to do with the sites in our district to make sure they're successful for everyone. Let me turn to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this item forward. I'm just going to be brief and say how exciting it is that We Hope is offering services at other locations. I've been incredibly impressed by their work at the Bariessa Safe Parking Site. I will say their rapport with the residents, their ability to provide what I think is incredible service, and their ability to, you know, get people placed, and their record is incredibly strong, and I've been hoping that they would be able to scale up in some way. Obviously, they need to scale up smartly and thoughtfully, but I do hope that they, I do hope that We Hope will be able to offer services at multiple locations in the city as they scale, because I've just been incredibly impressed, so I'm happy to support this action today.
Thanks for those comments. Agreed. Appreciate you highlighting the performance at Bariessa Safe Parking Site. It's been really, really impressive. All right, I don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Eric and Cupid. We are on to our final agendized item, which is item 8.2, Amendment to the San Jose Municipal Code Adopting the 2025 California Building Standards with Local Technical Amendments and Repealing Superseded San Jose Reach Codes. All right, we will begin with a staff presentation and then come back to the council.
I'm Lisa Joyner, Deputy Director and PBCE and the Chief Building Official, and I am joined by James Dobson, Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal for San Jose Fire Department. And we're talking about the 2025 California Code Adoption. The Building Code Adoption process happens every three years. The international building codes are the model for the California building codes, which in turn are the basis for our municipal code. In our municipal code, Title 17 covers the fire code, and Title 24 covers the building code. The 2025 California codes become effective on January 1st, 2026. The proposed ordinance adopts the 2025 edition of the California Building and Fire Codes with amendments. There's always some amount of modifications to the base code, either to the code section number or to the language itself. So, this ordinance updates any previously adopted local amendments to match code language or cross-references in the new code. It also updates our municipal code to eliminate existing local amendments that have been incorporated into the 2025 California codes. So, related to the Title 24 Building Code amendments, we will remove one local amendment related to the required seismic separation between buildings, and will remove the Reach Code amendments as are now incorporated into the 2025 California Energy and Green Codes. We will retain three previously approved amendments to the Building and Residential Codes related to special testing and inspections of concrete foundations, JIP board chair walls, and braced wall panels with JIP board. We are proposing no new local amendments to the 2025 California Building Codes. I'll pass it to Chief Dobson.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's James Dobson, Deputy Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal for the San Jose Fire Department. The San Jose Fire Department continues to focus on protecting life, property, and the environment through prevention and response. Since the last code adoption in 2022, significant events have identified concerns throughout the state. The Home Depot fire at 120 Blossom Hill Road burned to the ground, releasing hazardous runoff into our waterways and toxic smoke into our environment. While an illegal act initiated this, it was exacerbated by a second unlawful act. An individual who could not easily be identified shut off the water to the sprinkler system. Energy storage system fires and moss landing in Southern California released massive amounts of toxic smoke into the environment, threatening communities and firefighters and causing millions of dollars in damage to our energy sectors. The Palisades and Eaton fires in Southern California destroyed thousands of urban homes and businesses, forcing over 180,000 people to evacuate. The fire started in the wildfire hazard area, but spread into the urban environment. The San Jose Fire Department is among the most active in California in code analysis. We regularly collaborate with designers, manufacturers, contractors, regulators, certified testing facilities, and legislatures throughout our work. Our focus continues to be on supporting and the development to create vibrant San Jose economic community. We have identified ways to improve our municipal code that we think will assist designers and developers to navigate our codes. Part of this is putting our policies, which are directly required of the fire marshal and the building official into the code. This will minimize the need for resubmittals, which can cause delays and increase costs. Lastly, we've conducted a thorough evaluation of our code amendments to determine which can be eliminated and where the model code can be used. There are eight proposed amendments. Six proposed amendments, based on stakeholder feedback, provide clarification and incorporate existing policies as code amendments. These policies are already being implemented, but cause confusion because developers don't know where to cross-reference the underlying policy. Two proposed amendments regarding alternating tread stairs and outdoor rooftop storage and handling of hazardous materials are newly proposed. Of those six, I'll just do a brief review of them. And the reason I'm doing that is because there was a lot of questions that came up about our code amendments. The code currently requires two-way communications, and what this is, is if somebody gets trapped on a floor, that they can communicate with the unit's command post. But a separate construction permit is not required currently by the fire code. Designers and developers usually request that the system be deferred until the two-way communication system contractor is selected. This consistently creates plan review challenges for developers, as the new review process is added after the initial review is complete. It causes project delays and confusion. Creating a separate construction permit will simplify permitting process and allow the two-way communication contractor to obtain it directly, and it will likely reduce project delays and thereby lower costs. For cooking operations, we are currently not allowed, we don't allow it under membrane structures, such as 10-by-10 pop-up tents found at many unpermitted cooking sites outside of our special events. This amendment codifies the current requirement, but allows for an exception of larger tents where there may be an automatic sprinkler system. Reverting to the new code will eliminate this tool that we have to restrict unpermitted cooking. Codifying existing cooking operation policies under membrane structures while creating an exception for tents equipped with automatic sprinklers provides flexibility for special events. The purpose of the amendment to relocate the Class 1 standpipe hose connection to the intermediary stair landing is actually a current policy, and it's in all of our high-rises, and is in place in buildings throughout San Jose. It moves the standpipe connection away from the door, the exit door, and minimizes the amount of hose that will be in the stairwell, causing conflict with the people that are exiting. It allows for deeper penetration of our firefighters into the building. This amendment basically puts it into the code that this is where it is, is supposed to be. But it's, it won't increase costs because it's already being implemented. The energy storage systems for the San Jose, for the fire code, in NFPA 855 requirements and the fire code have had the most significant changes currently. I mean, we're seeing more changes in those code sections than anything else in the code. Large-scale fire testing is already required to reduce spacing for energy storage units. The challenge is developers don't have a code that provides clear direction regarding the testing requirements. Many jurisdictions just don't allow reduced spacing in their communities, therefore not allowing development to occur. San Jose has worked with designers, battery manufacturers, testing laboratories, and developers to successfully conduct large-scale fire testing, enabling these projects to move forward and be developed safely. We have multiple projects working to create national testing standards and have, and they appreciate our participation. One of the test projects recently identified, developed, identified design problems that would have contributed to a thermo-runaway propagation, which is what you saw on moss landing. The manufacturer corrected the design and was able to pass the test, and they're able to move forward with their project. This amendment will clarify to the industry, as the code catches up, what standards we should have for those tests. San Jose created a required wild and urban interface map, or the WUI construction map. With that, we determine what construction standards needs to be built in our WUI. This map that we have currently includes all of the hazard severity zones that are now listed in the fire code. That's moderate, high, and very high. The state responsibility area requires the same requirements in moderate, high, and very high. But in the current code that's just being about to, sorry, the new code that's going to be adopted, it omits moderate for the local responsibility areas. We feel that, especially with the advent of looking at the fires in Southern California, that it's important that we make sure that we have consistency between the SRA, the LRA, and our WUI map, our wild and urban interface map. That's the, that's one of the last ones that are already in policy. So, there's two that are not in policy, and one is there's an exception for stairwells that allows alternating tread design- that allows alternating tread design to go to the roof, to go to elevator rooms. Alternating tread design, it presents a hazard to firefighters. When you're going up and down stairwells in low-visibility environments wearing SCBA's, you can't see your feet. If you miss a step on an alternating tread design, you go down four levels. Commonly, you fall and you get injured. That's what we're trying to avoid with this amendment. We're not trying to increase costs. If you look at the cost of those, and I just did a Google search just before this meeting, they're the same price. So it's just for firefighter safety on that. Last one, as far as the new amendments, is there's a new code section that allows hazardous materials to be stored on a roof and be considered outdoor storage. Outdoor storage in the current fire code requires separation from buildings and from property lines so that it doesn't impact the building. Putting it on the roof causes it to directly potentially impact the building, any chemical release, chemical reaction. It's also really difficult for firefighters to fight up there because there's not really well-built stairs going up there and sometimes alternating tread. These are some of the things that we have concerns over as far as our amendments. On the rooftop storage in particular, what we're looking for is a tactical pause. We want to see what the implications are of starting to increase quantities for the whole building up to 25 to 100%. Right now, we have control areas in buildings that specify how much we're allowed to store. We talk about it as maximum threshold quantities. That's how much you're allowed to store in a building. By putting it on the roof, historically, it's always been considered indoor. But with the new code, it's out, it's not included. So now you can increase those amounts. We want to see what, what that potential is for not only our firefighters but for our residents. We have a lot of hazardous materials used in San Jose. So those are the new ones that I wanted to talk to. I do want to say that Appendix D is also where we have an addition, and you'll see it mentioned here. So one of the requirements of the fire code official is that I'm required to give a turning radius. It doesn't specify it in the code. It says the fire code official shall provide it. So I'm trying to put it into the code so that I can provide clarity to our customers. Our customers are saying, hey, I have to go to multiple spots to find this information. Why don't you just put it in the code for me? So we're trying to answer that question. So we do have a number of deletions that we're going to repeal. They are designed to reduce complexity and also that they're included into the code. We are proposing to remove one and two-family dwelling unit, review requirements. It's a duplicate in the code. Failure to comply with a stop work order, it's duplicated. Cannabis extraction room, gas detection interlocks, and required exhaust, it's a duplicate. Spill control for secondary, for hazardous materials liquids, it's a duplicate. Permitted fireworks use of financial responsibility requirements, it's duplicated in our MUNI code plus the fire code. So none of these, when we remove them, will add additional costs. So lastly, I want to talk about some of the things that we're modifying. We're adding some definitions to provide clarity on large-scale fire testing as well as the, just what is an energy storage system? We're actually reducing one of the requirements for our speculative design for sprinkler systems. And speculative design was created at the bequest of our business community. They said, why is it that every time that we have a new business come in here, we got to rip out the sprinkler system? They said, this is super expensive. So they said, is there a way for us to build the backbone that kind of looks at the, what the expected hazard is in the building and see if we can go ahead and build to that? So we created an amendment for that. But one of the things that we found, it was starting to negatively affect, and we heard feedback, are, are, places like across the street, the Starbucks, the restaurants, where they had no interest in having large pile storage or high storage. They just wanted aesthetics, a really nice high ceiling. So we're reducing that down in the code as far as making modifications. So overall, when we look at what our modifications are, we're trying to enhance the built environment. We're not trying to add additional layers on or costs. We're just simply trying to create legislation that moves our processes forward. I appreciate the time, and I'm going to pass it back over to Lisa.
Okay, so next steps are that we will be providing training sessions in early 2026 to highlight the significant changes between the 2022 and the 2025 California codes. And this is offered to design professionals, developers, contractors, really anybody who wants to come learn about the codes and listen to us. And we are available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Let's go to a public comment first.
And just to confirm, we're back to two minutes for these public comments, right?
Actually, once we change it, we keep it consistent going forward just to be fair to everybody. So let's keep it to 90 seconds, please.
Got it. We have Danny, Greg, and Alex. Please make your way down to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Mayhand, and Council members. My name is Greg Tuoyor, and I represent San Jose Firefighters Local 230. I want to echo and support Fire Chief Sapiens' memo and Fire Chief Dobson's recommendations, which provide clarity for developers while maintaining critical life safety precautions. One area I strongly support is the alignment of the Wildland Urban Interface Construction Criteria. Recent California wildfires, from Santa Rosa's Tubbs Fire to the Paradise Fire, Maui and Palisades, show that fires can reach dense suburban areas. They have shown WUI fires no longer stay in the foothills. They must move rapidly to, into our built environments. Aligning and enforcing these standards provides a critical minimum buffer for San Jose, where wildland areas and residential neighborhoods meet. Equally important are the chief's recommendations to not allow rooftop hazardous materials. From a firefighter's perspective, this change would dramatically increase risk. These materials, flammable, corrosive, and reactive chemicals are intentionally required to be stored outside, away from occupants. As for proposed changes to single staircase layouts or alternating tread designs, I share the chief's position that these are not reasonable solutions for urban fire safety. Alternating tread designs may save space, but they're not compatible with real-world fireground operations. Fires wearing full gear would not be able to operate in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. Alex Shore, Catalyze SV, here on behalf of a coalition of organizations, the Housing Action Coalition, San Jose YIMBY, and SPUR that are supporting the memo from the mayor and council members looking at ways to ensure that we're building as much housing as possible, including looking at different typologies for single-stair building in San Jose. I think today's question is a bit about expertise. There's no one who knows more about fighting fires than firefighters. And yet, when it comes to policy, that might be an area where the organizations know a thing or two. And we know that by looking at other cities and learning the lessons from them, if it is working in places like Seattle, New York, and Honolulu, then perhaps it could work here. And all we're asking you to do today is to study that. In addition, the experts and the organizations supporting this, the thing we do know about is housing. And that's an area where we all know at this city, we are unfortunately trying to improve but still falling short. And we don't want to see barriers to getting more housing built in this community, which is why it's so incredibly important. We continue to look at every tool in our tool belt to solve the housing crisis. And we think that this memo from council members and the mayor is a good step. So we hope you'll approve it and continue to move forward with different ways of getting housing built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Danny Mangan. I'm a union representative for Local 483, Sprinkler Fitters. I, you know, I wrote something, and after hearing the presentation, my only concern that I've read through, you know, from memos and whatnot is the single stair for buildings up to six, six stories. You know, for me, that's a concern as far as safety goes. You know, there's, being in the field of fire protection, I understand that, you know, a safe, it's critical to have a safe egress and access. And, you know, I have that, that concern for my membership and, and for after completion of the project. And there's, you know, there's well-documented examples where single staircase designs have led to tragedy due to limited escape for residents and restricted access for firefighters. So, you know, I just urge the council to, any directive that would move the city towards allowing single staircase high-rise construction, I would, I would want that to be discussed further. I know the Office of the State Fire Marshal is, has a work group that's discussing the single stair now. So, you know, I would maybe yield to that decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Back to council.
All right, thank you. Okay, appreciate the public comment and the presentation. And appreciate all the passion around both fire safety and building housing and how we balance the two, something we always have to weigh in our policy decisions. I do want to try to frame up the conversation a little bit. Certainly, public safety has to be a central consideration developing our building codes. There's no doubt about it. It is foundational. At the same time, we also want to build housing. And so we always have to figure out how we balance our need for housing, for affordability, against the steady progression in stricter and stricter requirements related to fire safety, environmental labor, and all impacts on neighbors, all the many additional impacts and risks that we are constantly finding and finding better ways to minimize towards zero. But if we do that to the point where we don't build any housing, which arguably we've been moving toward in California, we've got a broader societal problem. Layers of regulation over the years have made new construction prohibitively expensive in California. Cost of construction just over the last four years has gone up 34%, double the Consumer Price Index. And as a general principle, I don't believe that at the local level we should compound the problem by adopting building codes in San Jose that go above state requirements without a very careful analysis of the cost and a very explicit trade-off that the council is able to weigh in on. The truth is, California's existing building codes are some of the nation's most rigorous when it comes to safety, energy efficiency, and accessibility. So the state of California we're talking about. When we choose at the local level to then discretionarily add more, we had better scrutinize every one of those decisions and be clear on how much time and how much cost it adds. It's, so to be clear here, we're not proposing single-stair high-rises. High-rises are defined by 75 feet and above. The focus here is looking at what New York, Seattle, Hawaii have done, looking at lower heights of four to six stories, and studying, again, back to the conversation of what we just had on electrification of the fire engine fleet. We're talking about analysis, stakeholder engagement, and actually being able to make an informed decision. Data from a Pew study that came out in February of this year shows that with modern codes and sprinklers, single-stair buildings can be built safely. Between 2012 and 2024, a 12-year period, there was not a single death in Seattle or New York in a modern four-to-six-story, single-stair building with a lack of a second exit contributor. That doesn't mean it's the right decision today. We need to study it more. But I will note, the United States is an outlier on this. When you look around the world at the development of new buildings, across Europe, Asia, and elsewhere, we are an outlier. California is stricter than the nation, and we happen to take it upon ourselves to be even stricter locally, which is part of the reason we have the highest cost of construction. RAND study just showed the exact same apartment in Denver, Colorado, which is not known for cutting corners and putting their people at risk, is literally half the cost of building in the Bay Area. So we have to weigh the trade-offs. None of us want people to be less safe. Fully respect the input of our fire marshal and fire officials at the state level. But I do want to know each additional requirement we add above the state baseline and how much it costs. Pew's study found that four-to-six-story buildings with, with single stairways cost 6% to 13% less to construct than dual-stairwell buildings of that height, which is extremely meaningful when you consider that is the estimated additional cost of all local development fees combined. We spent a lot of time here debating, discussing, a lot of hand-wringing over reducing our fees. Just the second stairwell, which New York and Seattle do not require for four-to-six-story buildings, is worth the entirety of all of our fees in terms of cost per unit. Beyond the single staircase issue, I believe we should conduct a more thorough review of our own building code and identify more areas where we go above and beyond state requirements, assess the benefits and the rationale as well as the extra cost, and make sure that we have a process going forward for understanding those trade-offs explicitly because decades of not being explicit about those trade-offs and having many of them made administratively within departments without a council vote has contributed to the ever-escalating cost to building housing, not just here, but that is a pattern across our state. Look, we just had a big debate recently over heat pumps. And as we talked about affordability, the council decided not to impose the mandate. So I just, you know, I want to affirm, we can't endlessly layer on new requirements, processes, and costs and then say that we are serious about our housing affordability crisis and that we want our working families and our kids and grandkids to be able to afford to live in San Jose. Doesn't mean we throw out everything we've been doing. It just means we are really clear with dollars and cents about what are the trade-offs we're making. I think it is a real mistake for us to have 541 bespoke building codes across the 483 municipalities and 58 counties in the state versus primarily defaulting to very rigorous state codes that already exist. So that's where the memo's coming from, just like with the fire item we just discussed. I do want to be clear, we're not dictating here, cut all this stuff from code or don't do all these things. We're asking for some analysis and to slow down and better understand cost because we keep adding 10, 20, 30,000 per year with each new cycle of regulation we add every year in this city. And it's time for us to think differently. All right, with that, I'm going to turn to colleagues. I will go, well, Councilor Dewan has his hand up first. He was not a co-author on the group memo. But I'll go ahead and start with Councilor Dewan, and then I'm going to turn to Councilmember Tordeos, who was a co-author on the group memo. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me to go first here. You know, the, the cost of having two stairwell doesn't prohibit from continued built housing. And I think the true matter of the cost is that the land here is expensive. And now with the tariff, the material become expensive. And I'll tell you this, I will not compromise on safety for residents or for our firefighters, including there'll be our police department in there as well. On item 8.2 before us tonight concerned the city adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards and local technical amendments. This is an important step in keeping San Jose Building Code aligned with state law, advancing housing innovation, and maintaining public safety. However, I want to focus on a specific provision with However, I want to focus on a specific provision within this update, the proposal allowing residential building above three stories only a single fire exit or single stairwell. As a former fire captain, I can assure you, if it's three-story or six-story building, it is critically will cause safety onto a firefighter, especially in the efficiency evacuation routes, not just for the resident trying to get out, but firefighter to get in. When you combine these two-direction egress and ingress into one single stairwell that filled with smoke and water, you create a dangerous choke point that increase the risk for everyone involved. Both the International Association of Firefighter and Local 230 and the National Fallen Firefighter Foundation have publicly warned that single-exit stair design posed significant life risk. These concerns are not theoretical in fire incident. A single stairs can quickly become impassable, trapping resident, limiting firefighter access. Recognizing this, the California Building Standard Commission and the Office of State Fire Marshal have already formed a statewide work group to study the safety implication of these single-exit, single-stair building. That work group is expected to release its finding and recommendation in January 2026. Given this timeline, I believe it would be premature for San Jose to move forward with adapting the single stair provision now before the technical analysis is completed. I just want to point out that, single stairwell, remember when there's a high-rise incident, one high-rise incident which is above 75 feet, go up to maybe a five-story with all the code in between? You're talking about almost a whole department will call upon that high-rise. That's, that's not including police officer and the residents that live there to going out. In order to get up the access up to the floor you needed, we carry enormous amount of equipment and hose. Those stairwell will be, will have water, will have smoke. And when one hallway, one stairwell is choked, where are people going to go? They're going to die. If that was your family that was in a six-story building, do you think you're going to keep a really calm, meaner when you're choking and you're fighting for your life coming out of that stairwell and when firefighter going up? I don't think so. And you're risking firefighter lives in order to, to make certain group more profitable? That, that's not okay with me. I will and I will not compromise on a resident's safety or the safety of our firefighters. I have a few questions. Chief Dobson, with your 25-year experience, please tell me, is it critical to have two stairwells when you go into a building that's considered a high-rise?
Definitely for a high-rise and actually could be more than that for a high-rise. The single stair is talking about going up to six stories in height. The challenge that we have with anything above three stories is we don't have a ladder that can reach it. We use a lot of ground ladders. So, now you're dependent on aerial apparatus, which are not really designed for egress, they're designed for rescue. So, you don't have a secondary means. So, I work on that work group that you were talking about. I'm part of that. I work with architects, designers, developers, academic scholars that are in there, as well as testing laboratories. And we're trying to look at all of these items and come up with recommendations to the Office of the State Fire Marshal and the Building Standards Commission. That's our task. That's what we're trying to work on. So, like you, I would say before we can answer that question, we really need to research it. We need to really look at it. And I think at the state level, we have the people in place, the experts in place, to make that determination. I don't think we need a secondary team here trying to answer the same questions that are being answered at a state level.
And Chief Dobson, are you on the single stair work group with the State Fire Marshal?
Yes, I'm a voting member.
And when you have six stories building, wouldn't you say most of our department personnel will be there?
Yes, our, our response model, we will, we actually, it's not considered in the code a high-rise, but anything above four stories has a standpipe. And when we have standpipes, we, our operations are high-rise in nature. We carry everything aloft. And so, yes, they, they are challenging. Although I will tell you, in going into the work group, I've tried to keep an open mind and hear out what the concerns are and to see if there's any engineering things that can satisfy what needs to be done. I will tell you that they've done egress analysis and they've identified in a single stair some of the same things that you've said. So, but they're looking at other options in that same work group. And that work group has been meeting since January this year. So, it's, it's been quite a long journey as far as, of the people that have participated.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, I really appreciate your point that more requirement can make things more expensive. That exactly why I was saying earlier about electrification item. There are definitely time when reducing requirement makes sense, but not when it come to safety and saving lives. 10 out of 11 member of this council just voted to support Measure A because we didn't want our loved one put in danger. So, why is this different? Why are we listening, why aren't we listening to our local firefighter or IAAF? We should trust the people who put their lives on the line and the professional. Therefore, I motion for approval of my memo, accepting the staff recommendation, and direct the administration to monitor the group's progress and report to council shortly after January 2026 for further discussion.
All right. Thanks, councilmember. I do just want to clarify, we are not talking about high-rises. Just want to be clear about that. We're talking about smaller buildings and high-rises and a few other things I may clarify later just factually here, but let me turn to Councilmember Tordeos next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and staff for the presentation and to the members of the public who came to speak, as well as the more than a dozen members of the public and organizations who wrote letters of support for our memo. I appreciate my colleagues' eagerness to think critically about the way that our building codes actually impact building costs here in San Jose. Our memo would approve the staff recommendation with the exception of any local findings and amendments that go above and beyond state requirements. And as already been said, would direct the city manager to evaluate a local building code change to allow construction of buildings up to six stories with a single staircase, plus any necessary legislative advocacy for changes to state law. This is a policy area that I've been evangelizing for several years now, dating back to my time on the Planning Commission, and I'm interested in it specifically because this has the potential to significantly decrease construction costs and help us meet our housing needs, but critically without compromising safety. Speaking briefly just to the benefits that I see here and the potential from the perspective of District III, this reform would unlock multifamily housing development on thousands of small-scale parcels across our district, near and, in and near downtown and near our major transit stations, and it would critically enable that development to move forward without the time-consuming and costly process of slowly aggregating multiple adjacent parcels. It would also support the implementation of several ongoing city initiatives, like our missing middle housing strategy and our small multifamily housing policy. And it would also allow these parcels to be developed at densities that actually support the long-term fiscal health of our city, where otherwise they might be redeveloped with low-density uses that would be a long-term drain on our general fund. We've already spoken to some of the costs here. The Pew study that was referenced shows that this could cut construction costs on these buildings by up to 13%. For context, that is a more significant cost reduction than any single housing incentive program that the city has ever passed, and it would do that without any need for public subsidy and without sacrificing our parks fees and our construction tax revenue. I do want to take a moment to address some of the safety concerns that have been raised, since I think I can speak for everyone here, that we are not looking to compromise safety in any way in order to make housing less expensive. And I also want to address the letter that was submitted from IAAF Local 230. I want to start by saying that it was never our intention to exclude Local 230 from this work. And I view the action today, as has already been said, as the very first step in that longer process. And that longer process needs to include more research, needs to include stakeholder engagement, both with our fire union, our state fire marshal, members of our building trades, and other interested stakeholders. In terms of the five specific fires that are cited in that letter, which have been referenced on the dais here, it is certainly true that all of those fires were tragedies, but it is also true that none of those fires were in buildings like the ones that we are proposing with this memo. If you actually look at the specific fires that were referenced in that letter, they were all in historic buildings that were over 100 years old. Four of the five fires were actually in single-family homes or other low-rise structures. Two of the buildings involved illegal, unpermitted units, and none of the buildings in question had any modern safety features like sprinklers, fire-rated construction, self-closing doors, or pressurized stairwells, the exact sorts of regulations that you would expect to be included in an updating building code allowing higher single-stair buildings. And again, I am a firm believer that it is important that we evaluate the safety impacts of any code change, but fortunately, we don't need to actually rely on anecdotes or speculation or individual isolated incidents because, as the mayor said, we have research in this area. That Pew report found, it looked at the over 4,000 four-to-six-story, modern, single-stair buildings in New York City, and it found that over that 12-year period, their safety track record was identical to residential buildings in New York City that did not or that had more than one staircase. And as was already said, that study identified zero fire deaths in that 12-year period in modern, single staircase buildings stemming from the lack of a second exit. So, I believe that the available data, both domestically in Seattle and New York and looking at comparative fire deaths abroad in Europe and Asia which allow this type of building, shows that these buildings have a strong safety track record. And what's more, that Pew study also noted that modern apartment buildings have a fire death rate six times lower than older apartment buildings and single-family homes. So, to the extent that our current building codes are making it more difficult to build new housing, we are having the direct effect of forcing more of our residents to live in structures that are less safe. Finally, I just want to note that this is not some untested or radical policy idea. It is a common sense reform that has seen increasing momentum across the country. In addition to Seattle and New York, which have allowed single staircase buildings for decades, several states, including Washington, Montana, and Colorado, have recently adopted statewide reforms to allow taller, single staircase buildings, and a growing number of cities have also legalized this new building typology, including Honolulu, Austin, Nashville, Memphis, Culver City, Santa Monica, and more. So, I really do think that this allows us to take a step showing that we are interested in innovative solutions to our housing crisis that decrease costs without impacts to public safety. And moving forward with this direction will show that San Jose is committed to leading based on data and evidence, that we are thoughtful in considering the costs and benefits of regulation, and that we are serious about addressing our housing crisis, even when that means shifting from the way that things have been done traditionally. And with that, I would like to make a substitute motion to move our memo from myself, Mayor Mahan, and councilmembers Campos, Cohen, and Mulcahy.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate you articulating that and sharing all the additional data, and I've got even more studies here that we can get into if we need to, but let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone here, speaking in support of whichever side of position you're on. You know, I'm, I'm one of the, you know, few, the minority on the council who does not own a home. You know, I grew up working poor. I know what it feels like to have a home be in foreclosure multiple times. I know what it's like to sleep on park benches, to be homeless, and so I definitely can get behind policies and updates to standards that can improve the affordability of housing. That being, that being said, I think that it's important that when we are, the age-old thing, you want to go fast, go alone; you want to go far, you go together. And when we introduce policies that affect bargaining units and affect the safety of, you know, individuals we rely on to be first responders, I think it's important to consult them. And I'm not saying no forever, but, you know, when I have firefighters coming, you know, before us here on the city council, warning that there is safety hazards for residents and for our first responders, that's, that's something that I, I can't support. But that, that doesn't mean that, you know, this may not, may be a good policy, but I want to make sure that before I, I support something, that I do so in consultation with those it may, it may affect. So, I'm, I'm currently going to vote no, but that doesn't mean it's a bad policy and I'm, you know, not talking bad about the policy in, in theory. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate that. I just want to clarify, the motion, the substitute motion is to study, not to implement this change. All right, let's go to Councilman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to thank staff for the thorough update in our building codes. It's a lot of work to align our codes with state standards, to update our codes for, with new, modern techniques, and to, especially on the fire side, make sure that we're updating our codes for the maximum fire safety, given what we're seeing around California. And I really appreciate the updates around the urban, wildlife, urban interface. My district and many of our districts do have a large portion of our, that are affected by that, so I want to make sure that we are, that we are supportive of whatever code we could, codes we can do for construction. I do have one question on that, on that element. I see, see in the, in the report that all new buildings will have to have the, the new, more fire-resistant front doors. I think it was like a 20-minute fire door. Is that, that, is that correct? There's a new, there's a updated standard on fire doors, on front doors?
Yes, so there is a whole new code that deals specifically with wildlife, and so they've moved it out of the building code, fire code, and actually given its own code because it's that important. So, yes, there is rating on windows, doors, there are, the type of construction, the boxed eaves, there's, there's numerous requirements with the idea that it prevents embers from being cast into the attic space or underneath house, which then contributes to the fire and the propagation from unit to unit.
And this is code that came out, that's part of the new updated state codes that we're adopting?
That's correct.
This is not like a San Jose-specific?
That's correct.
Code change. Does this code apply to existing buildings when replacements are made, or is it just for new building construction?
It's for new building construction. There's a recommendation, of course, from the fire service as well as the building department. If, if, if you were in those areas, home hardening is something that you should consider, but it is not a requirement at this point.
And it's not a necessarily requirement if somebody's doing a modernization in an existing home that's, that's not in the urban wildlife interface but is in other parts of the city?
No. Yeah, would not be required in other parts of the city. And even then, you would, I mean, it would have to be a new home to really have to have to have this upgrade.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to then generally comment that, you know, here in Silicon Valley, we're known for our innovation, for, for thinking differently, for, for pushing to new, for new technologies, new standards, for understanding new ways of doing things, and there's a lot of rapid changes in science and technology. We have new sta, we should, we should be willing to adopt new standards, new construction methods, and adopt new technologies, and it is that innovation that will solve many of our problems, including our housing crisis. And so, I am excited for us to always be exploring what we can do to, to use new approaches to save costs. We've, we've talked so much about cost as the barrier to what we're doing, and we also need to then try everything we can to, to reduce costs. So, we should be exploring, as this proposal brings forward, ways to save money. And I was very appreciative of my colleagues' comments about new housing being the way to actually make people move into safer conditions rather than stay in old or unsafe conditions. So, I want to thank you for... So I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue, councilmember.
Thanks, Councilmember Cohen. Appreciate that. Let me go to Councilmember Condellis.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking my colleagues for, for the wonderful conversation and the debate. You know, I appreciate the zeal of Councilmember Dwan and, you know, his comments, especially as it relates to his experience as a firefighter. I also appreciate the spirit of the memorandum authored by my colleagues, attempting to reduce the building costs in our city that could potentially open the door to more housing development in the right areas. You know, I do have concerns, especially with, you know, the Silicon Valley mentality a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, on, you know, failing fast and willing to break something and learn something. But with lives, that's not something that I'm willing to fail at all. And so this is one of those precarious issues that I think we need to be very, very meticulous with. And, you know, I understand the memorandum is to evaluate and bring back the opportunity to discuss what that looks like, to get rid of a second stairwell, and to iterate on something new. I totally appreciate that. But there's, there's several questions that I have. With the passage of AB 835 in 2023, the work group is going to come up with recommendations, I believe, by January. And, you know, I'm hoping some of those recommendations can inform, you know, I can kind of read the tea leaves, on whatever comes, comes back to councils. Is that, is that, is that what you're thinking?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I understand it was only three stories, so what we're asking for, or what the memorandum is asking from my colleagues is six stories, correct?
No, the work group is evaluating up to six stories.
Okay, okay. So there is no, there's no, there's no gap there. There's no delta there. Okay, good. And so with regards to the fire, the fire code in Seattle, which is what was referenced, I believe they have a, a cap on the number of units per floor. Do we have some sort of cap like that in our city?
Go ahead.
So the, the current building code allows you to have one stair up to three stories and no more than four units per floor.
Okay.
Seattle allows it up to five stories, no more than four units per floor.
Got it, okay. And, and also, the, Councilmember Tordeos mentioned requirement for fire protection measures, fire-resistant construction materials of up to an hour, and automated sprinkler systems in each unit. Do we require that in our codes as of now, currently?
So not all of that. Sprinklers are required for new construction, but some of these things are the measures the cities have put in place to justify.
Fair enough, and that's what I'm asking about. And then there's also a requirement about 20 feet or less of travel distance between the staircase and the entrance of any unit. That's also, that's also one of the requirements that they have. Do we have any?
And that's an enhanced requirement.
Oh, yeah, do, that is a city requirement as well?
No.
Okay, that's a Seattle. Do we have any requirements for distance between unit entrance and/or, and/or staircase?
Not from the unit entrance to the staircase, but there is a requirement for the farthest point you could be in your house to, you get out.
Got it, okay. And, and so, okay, so there's several questions, and there's, there's all these different scenarios that I think of in my mind. And, and so that's, that's why I'm, I was willing to second the motion and appreciate the concerns brought forth by, you know, who I, folks who I consider experts in the field, folks who are actually out there fighting fires. And while I also appreciate the willingness to try to figure out how we unlock unit potential, there's, I think there's, there's several questions that needs, that need to be answered. Okay, I had a question with regards to the first half of, of the local amendment, the first portion of the, of the memo with regards to the building codes referenced in A2, A3, C2, and C3. Is there, I believe those are reach codes, so they're, they go above, they go above the building codes of what the state has enacted? Is that, is that correct?
So we have amendments that are currently approved, currently in the municipal code, related to jipboard sheer walls, that we don't allow jipboard sheer walls in San Jose due to the, it's not great for earthquakes.
Okay.
And we're just proposing to keep that moving forward.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say that the other numbers there, although I had challenges understanding those numbers, I think that it does not move forward many of the amendments that we're proposing as far as the fire department.
Got it, okay. All right. Well, no, that's, that's all for now. But again, I appreciate the opportunity to have this dialogue with my colleagues on the dais. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate it. I do just want to note, the goal is explicitly not to fail fast, it's to study it. So just want to be clear about that.
Point of information, I was just, I was just quoting one of our colleagues, so regardless, you know, that's.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear it, but it sounds good. Let's go to Councilmember Kameh.
Thank you so much. I just wanted clarification. The motion on the floor does not include the building code references in A2 and 3, and C2 and 3. I'm just wondering, in terms of its effects on what we're going to do, how does that affect moving forward?
So my understanding of the memo is that it was new amendments would need the analysis. So building for Title 24 is not proposing any new amendments, they're existing.
Okay, so it's not going to affect anything else?
Well, in the fire department, we have eight new amendments, some of those you heard that were policies to try and streamline that process, as well as the alternating tread, and then hazardous material storage on top of roofs being considered outdoor storage.
So that means that the altering tread would not be included in the, the new?
It's my understanding that none of?
Yeah, so we, just as authors of the memo, I'll interject, I think that's right. The idea is to request more analysis and discussion of cost and trade-offs on any of the enumerated new local codes that go above and beyond state law and state code. We have had a habit in San Jose of at an administrative level, not even council policy, adding additional local rules and requirements, over and above the state's existing code.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what is it going to include and what is it not going to include? So right now, since it doesn't include it, this whole situation with the alternating staircase is not going to be included. I think, I think we need to, if we are going to evaluate, I would suggest that that would be something we, we add in there, that these are to be looked at, because that's not what it says here, right? So, so that's, that's one thing. In terms of, of the effects of some of these items, if we're not going to do them all because they're new, but, you know, to me, that's, that's very relevant in terms of safety issues, and I think it's worth bringing forward. So, so that's one thing that I would be concerned about. The other thing is, and, you know, quite frankly, I think that it's important to not have obstacles in terms of looking at, trying to develop more housing. But at the same time, if there are these elements that make it more hazardous for our firefighters, that's a, that's a, that's a problem. And I think that we have to remedy some of those situations. So I think that I have a little bit of a problem with that. And I also think that we need to include those who are the experts, and certainly our firefighters, who I feel should be and need to be part of the conversation. Also, you know, those in our, in our building trades. I think that it's important for them to be part of the conversation. They were not, and, you know, that does happen. But I think that's pretty important. So I don't know if there is a, as part of this evaluating, the part two in the memo, you would bring back what has been learned from the working group? Is that what the idea is?
I don't think we've explored exactly what would happen. I think many of the policies would remain just that, policies. There are many parts of the fire code that leave, as far as the requirements, up to the fire code official. And so we've been, the reason why we're pushing those forward is that recommendations of our customers to have one place to look for these items. So those would remain policies. And then we don't go above the codes on those policies. We just dictate what, we fill the void of what the code has. There's ambiguity built into the code where it says it's, you know, for example, up to the building official, up to the fire official, to make that determination.
I see, okay. Well, I would ask for a friendly amendment, that we include the firefighters in the discussions as we evaluate and take a look at this. And, you know, also, the items that have been omitted, or, you know, any new findings or new adoptions, that we have a conversation with our Local 230 as part of, of looking at this. Because I think at the end of the day, we want everyone to be safe. And certainly, you know, it's not something that I think we take lightly. Yes, we want housing, but not at the expense of people's lives. And so I think that having more conversations with, with our firefighters and, and, you know, building trades would, would help at least inform this evaluation.
I completely agree. You know, I view the vote today as really the start of the conversation, not the end of the conversation. And I completely agree that moving forward as part of this evaluation, we want to solicit feedback and have more discussions with both our fire department, our state fire marshal and their working group, and our local building trades. So happy to accept the friendly amendment.
And can you remind me, was, who was the second or, Councilmember Kameh? Is that okay with you? You have to also approve for it to be included. Okay, thank you. Let's go to, thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Vice Mayor.
Well, Councilmember Kameh, you kind of stole my approach. I was going to see how we could bring this all together by approach, by bringing in the same friendly amendment, although I'd like to expand it to all stakeholders. Fire marshal's great, but we want to bring in builders and other interested, so if you'll accept that as a?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Then I will be happy to accept, to approve the motion and the amendments.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Let me go to Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for their sincere concern and appreciation of safety standards that protect both our firefighters and our civilians. Just have one quick question to staff. With the current substitute motion on the floor, if it passes, and we've just heard friendly amendments that are asking for this, so can the city administration confirm that in addition to the San Jose Fire Department, we will also include IAFF Local 230, sprinkler fitters Local 483, and other labor partners in the community outreach, key partners conversation that will be conducted during the evaluation of single-stair amendments?
Is this for the, I'm just trying to understand, is this for the original motion or the?
This is the current motion on the floor.
The current motion.
Yeah, with the friendly amendments.
I, I don't speak for the other trades, but we'll be happy to participate as far as the fire department goes.
I know.
I believe that was included, I believe everybody listed is included in the motion.
Right. We will be, we'll do a very inclusive stakeholder outreach when, as the, as the department evaluates this, and does this direction, and implements this direction. So we will be very inclusive in our stakeholder outreach. So I'll just confirm that, and that is in the direction.
Thank you, Jennifer. I know that we heard from our firefighters, in addition to our sprinkler fitters, and it's all part of the same conversation. It's all part of making sure that our buildings are safe and that we are not compromising on safety with this policy. And so I am also in support of the current motion on the floor.
Thanks, councilmember. All right, we're coming back around for a second round of comments. Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In my memorandum, it is stated, "Direct administration to monitor the work group progress, bringing forward a report to the city council for consideration shortly after the report is published in January 2026." It's already included in my memorandum. And, you know, if we waited seven, well, two and a half months, though, it's about 75 days, for the work group to come up with their recommendation, it's, it's not going to hurt anyone, it's not going to change unless the recommendation, you know, totally for it. We need to allow our state fire marshal, our experts in both the IAFF Local 230 and other departments to give us their thought process, especially in the work group, in January 2026. That is stated very clearly in my memorandum. Thank you.
Councilmember Tordeos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also just wanted to push back against some of the things that have been said about this being a move-fast-and-break-things sort of policy. That is not at all how I view this, and we've reiterated that we do want to evaluate safety and make sure that we are not compromising that in the sake of housing development. But I really don't think that we are here. We are pointing to a housing type that has been proven to be safe over the span of many years in Seattle and in New York City, and a housing type which is one of the most common types of housing built all across the world in countries spanning decades, including countries that have a much better track record with fire safety than we do, both in the United States and here in San Jose. I just want to reiterate that this is, again, the first step in the process, completely supportive of the friendly amendments that have been made, to have a very inclusive stakeholder outreach as this process moves forward. But I do think that this is a valuable action to take today, to show that San Jose is interested in innovative approaches to simultaneously tackling safety while also reducing housing costs. And I would note that this is, again, the policy that would have one of the most significant impacts in terms of decreasing construction costs that council has ever passed. And to the extent that this opens up more housing development, I think this has the opportunity to be a win-win in terms of building more housing for our communities that we desperately need, providing more jobs for all of our unionized workers in the building trades, while also maintaining those same high safety standards. So I am hopeful that we are able to come together and pass this today. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Councilmember Condellis?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, yeah, you know, this is, regardless of what was said, this is, you know, the fail-fast mentality is never a good conversation when we're talking about lives and public safety, safety codes. But needless to say, we live where we live. I want to just give, give kudos to my colleagues, and also for, for, oh, everybody to find a middle ground and a pathway forward, especially because ultimately, the goal is to make sure that our stakeholders, whether it's Local 230, or whether it's, you know, the, the folks who are expert, experts in this field, to get them looped in into the conversation. And, and so I will be supporting the, the, the motion on the floor with the, or the sub-motion on the floor, with the, the friendly amendments provided. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Appreciate that. I think we've exhausted everybody's comments. Let's vote.
This motion passes 9 to 2 with Councilmember Ortiz and Dwan voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you all. We are on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on city business that was not on today's agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
Yes, we have two, Mark Trout and Debra Goldin. Please make your way to the podium.
I was really glad Mr. Ortiz brought up, "If a stranger sojourned with thee in your land, ye shall not vex him; but the stranger that dwells with you shall be unto you as one born among you, and thou shalt love him as thyself, for ye were strangers in the land of Egypt. I am the Lord your God." But you're pulling it out of context, because when Israel came out of Egypt and it came to the border of Edom, they wouldn't let him pass through their border, and it said, "Thus Edom refused to give Israel passage through his border."
Can we try to bring it back to city? Can we try to bring it back to city business?
Right. This is city business. All of you are anarchists, you're all siding with the felons, the illegal aliens, and nobody is siding with the people. And you're responsible. See, Christians are not anarchists, they're not lawless. Peter lost his life at the hands of the government, and so did Paul. And let's see what Peter said. You know what Peter said? Submit yourselves to every ordinance of man for the Lord's sake, whether it be to the king as supreme, or unto governors as unto them that are sent by him for what? The punishment of evil-doers, and for the praise of them that do well. So think about it. This is your, you're going to answer to God when you die, I'm telling you. God's going to bring this up. Now, in our church bulletin, it talks about words, and it says, our Lord tells us that every idle word that men speak, they will give account of in the day of judgment. And he adds, by your words you'll be justified.
Thank you, your time has ended. Next speaker, please. We have Deborah, and we received a new card, Churchill.
Okay, if you heard your name called, please come on down. What were the cards that were submitted, again?
Churchill and Deborah Goldine.
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. This is related to human trafficking. I was the face of, your face of homelessness, now I'm your face of human trafficking. I have been trying to reach out to your people, Mayor Matt Mahon, and I'm very disappointed in the outcome. I've showed up at many town hall meetings to express my safety concerns, particular with women and children regarding your police department. I have questions that need to be answered by the police department, and they're not cooperating. Can I give you a small envelope? I'm requesting an in-person meeting with the chief of police, and I'm having a really hard time trying to get through to the chief of police. And this is very pertinent, because I spent 12 years working at CDCR. I'm not a criminal, I'm an asset to your community, and I'm trying to get my life cleared up. I have a warrant for my arrest based on a child support failure to pay. I'm homeless with no resources, something's wrong with that picture. And Senator Sam Licardo's interns are not cooperating, so I've already reached the public level of concern. And I just wish that it can be handled appropriately and in a timely manner. My request for an in-person meeting, it's going to be a 15-minute one, but can I give you this packet?
If you could just give it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that you get it, because.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We received one additional card from Sean.
Every time I come here to talk, or every time I come to this meeting, there's no additional agendas down here for disabled folks. Every time I come here, I have to take my parking ticket and give it to somebody else to take it to the top to get it validated. And almost every time I come here, I have to ask somebody else to move, because the disabled seats have a little tiny marker on them, this big, the little blue disabled person, that nobody can see and nobody is aware of. I've asked numerous times, I've spoken to Lee about it, and none of this has changed. So I don't understand when we're supposed to be so great about accessibility and ADA. You're not, it's like horrible. Like every time I'm here, I'm dependent on somebody else, and dependent on somebody if they're going to go to the top and bring down an agenda. I'm dependent on somebody to go up to the top and do my parking validation. I'm, I have to sit there, especially when it's full, and go, excuse me, are you disabled? No, can you move? I shouldn't have to do that. It should be clearly marked. It's embarrassing to have to do that, and it's also awkward. As much of a badass as I can be, I'm actually naturally shy, nobody believes that, but when it's just me, and I'm not behind my, my shield of activism, it's really hard for me to go up to somebody and go, hi, are you disabled? No, can you move? And it's really weird watching a whole row move for you. It should be marked, it should be simple, there should be agendas here, there should be a way to act to.
Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you. So our final card is from Deborah Goldine, it is an appear that she's present, so back to the council.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Thank you all, we're adjourned.[1774.88]